Please.
Mayor Knoos.
Here.
Mr. Donnie.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Creedy.
Here.
Mr. McQueen.
Yes.
Here.
Thursday.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Okay, notice of this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News, Courier-News, and the Star Ledger, filed with the municipal clerk, and posted on the municipal bulletin board on January 3rd, 2020. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we need to approve our minutes. Oh, no, we're getting the presentation so good. Okay, you guys are up. Everyone, I'll let you introduce yourselves. These are our consultants here who are going to help us get focused, so.
It's not an aspiration. It's gonna take more than one night.
Yeah.
That's the issue. Yes, it will.
That's our speech.
This is just the introduction. Okay, yeah.
My name is Alan Zal, and I'm the director for Senate Government Services for Rutgers. My colleague is Dr. Andrew Mivara, director of our EMA program. And we work together as a team, heckle and jekyll.
For better or for worse.
For better or for worse.
Okay.
You had sent something to the league asking for some assistance on strategic planning.
Yeah.
And we're here to provide some guidance.
Yeah, and it was so great that they sent me in your direction. I didn't realize that you had those services available. That's terrific.
They asked me to do it for free.
I know, that was the best part.
Even better.
Do you mind if we?
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe you want to come up here and make it a little more intimate here.
We visit different towns around the state when it's useful.
Good.
Yeah, no, that's great to know.
Just by way of introduction, we are prepared to assist the process. The final product is yours to do, it's not ours to do. We will not do the plan for you. We will work with you to create something, but that's yours to do, not ours. There were, I had asked, you had to submit to me ideas from the council and yourself. There are some similarities that are really useful, that we intend to use or suggest that you use in your plan, because there's a consensus. And if this process works, it's you build on the consensus, not the areas of disagreement. Take the areas you kind of agree on and work with those. Disagreements you deal with later. So, the approach is there are a couple of things that were common to all of you, that build on those and the other stuff, you know, you don't deal with. You need to consider in the process the role of your manager. Hello, welcome.
Ralph, we didn't get introduced.
The role of your citizens. And most importantly, your administrative code, which tells you what you can and should, should, should or should not be doing. Because your code, every town is required to have a code that defines relationships, authority, responsibilities. So, your code is really important for some of the things that we're talking about. We look at your code, there's some things in it that you might, you probably are aware of, some things you might not be aware of. It really defines the relationship between elected and appointed officials. That's really critical to the process. There are some elements in the strategic planning process that we will share with you. They're general, they're universal. Some of the elements will fit for a town, they don't fit every place. Because, because you are governed by the state, you're governed by your own rules and regulations. So, some things you can change, some things you cannot change. And you need to recognize your capacity for change, your capacity for non-change. Some things you can do, some things you can't do. We'll share, let me share the elements with you. And then we're going to share with you if, with your consent.
Left side, yeah.
Yeah, Jack, you're learning quickly what things we can't do, right?
The reality is, is a town lots of things.
Just went through training.
Lots of things you really cannot do, and that's the reality of it.
Okay.
Just please, just pass them down.
Right.
And this is a general, you're not required to look at these, but it gives you a sense of, you look at internal things, external things. Your finances, your relationship with your employees, your competitors, what other towns are doing in relation to what you're, to what you're doing, your facilities, so, okay. We have a small presentation for you that we'll, we'll spend about 90 seconds on if we're lucky. This is, can you hold this?
No, go ahead.
This is about just local government in New Jersey. We've done this in other places. It's been helpful because it puts things in context. So, let me give you a second to get it.
Roles, responsibilities, laws.
The critical point is that there's really been a movement from legislative control to executive control in local governments. And we've been around since like 1700s. That's, that's today's history here.
Not us literally.
Not us literally, but the point is, there's been a movement to put executive control in the hands of one or two people to be responsible and accountable for what the town does. It can't be a committee to make every decision that this does not work. And it's moved from legislative to executive because of the complexity of services. You do a lot more now in 2020 than you did five years ago, 10 years ago, 20 years ago. So, the emphasis on let's find one locus to make the decisions, to be accountable for what we do. So, that's generally where this state has moved. There are 12 forms of government in New Jersey. You're one of the 12 forms, you're a borough form. Borough form happens to be the most popular form of government in the state. Most people like, like, like burrows, and you're, you're one of them. So, you're, you're at least in the majority of most places. Okay, page two. Page three. There are three historical periods in government. Before 1950, from the 1798 to 1890s. Optinal Charter law was, was, was considered in 1950. An amendment in 1981. It changed the form of government local. It gave local jurisdictions the capacity to make decisions, to empower staff to do things that were not being, not being done before. So, the optional charter law was really a very significant movement in, in New Jersey. You're, you're subject to that. Okay, again, there are more burrows than, than any other form of government. Next page, in terms of any analysis. Of the 556 jurisdictions, 270 are boroughs and townships. Burrows are the most significant part, so you're part of those. There are three forms of structure, not a formal government. It's elected legislators, elected executive, where the mayor is elected independently. That's 341 jurisdictions. Elected legislator executives, where the town elects both the council and the mayor, and the council usually selects the mayor. That's 172. And elected legislators, appointed executives, 52. You're part of the first batch, elected legislators, elected executive, because your mayor is elected by, by himself or himself. Next page, again, I'm going through this quickly because, just by way of background. Optimal municipal charter law was changed from 1950 to 1981. It gave more flexibility to towns in terms of what they did and what they did not do. And the next page is the variations. There are six key elements here. Whether jurisdiction is government legislators or a combination of legislators and executive. The number of elected officials is part of that. Terms of office is defined by that. Whether the terms of office are staggered or concurrent. You have a staggered form of government here in your borough. That's your choice. Whether you serve at large, or you represent wards, which is another issue for, you know, statewide. And finally, whether your elections are partisan or nonpartisan. So, the optional charter law, which is a state, state legislation, you're affected by it, as is every other town.
Just a question, if, if you wanted to change, say, from staggered to concurrent or whatever, how would you go through that process?
Be a referendum.
So, would be a vote?
Yeah, be a vote, yeah, yes. You cannot just do that by yourself independently. You have to go back to, to the public. Say, this is what we want to change. You can change the form of government, it's legal to do that, but there's a process by which you do that. You just, six of you just can't do that by yourselves. Okay, next page, this is you, the borough. Borough sits council elected by the voters. You serve at large, there are no wards in this town. You serve three-year stagger terms.
The page just says borough at the top.
Again, I'm going through this quickly because this is not the key point in this discussion, but just by the way of background, you have a four-year term as the mayor. You preside over the council, you have veto authority. You have the executive responsibilities, the mayor. And your mayor may not delegate ordinance to an administrator. Some towns have administrators, some towns don't. Some towns, the clerk is the administrator. It is important, in our experience, to have an administrator who does the day-to-day work really for the council and for the mayor. Because you really can't do it, with all due respect, you're part-time, as dedicated, as committed, as good as you are. You need a body here, 40 hours a week.
Volunteers, yes.
You know, thank you, no volunteers. So, the administrat, the administrative structure is usually helpful to most towns and jurisdictions. And it says council may adopt administrative code, you have an administrative code. The administrative code really is the rules and regulations, essentially the bible, by which you operate. And you really cannot vary from what the administrative code, whether you're sitting as mayor, or you're sitting as council. People will come after you, people will be for you. They need to adhere to the administrative code. Conclusion, this is the end of this discussion. The form of government is the means to the end, it's not the structure, it's really the product. It doesn't matter whether you're a borough, or a village, or whatever you are. It's people sitting behind the seats like you are. They really will make it or will not make it. There's no one, one best form of government. Different places work differently in different places. Some places boroughs are best, other places cities are best, other places towns are best, whatever you are. You'll make that determination. And most importantly, it's the individuals who occupy the office that matter. It's not the form of government. You could be a different form of government, you'll still be sitting up here making decisions. And that's really the critical aspect of what we're doing here. Some elements that are important for government, and this is really why we're here, and this is what brings us to the discussion. What makes the government work is the common vision. It's unambiguous roles. Clear understanding of your authority and your limits to your authority. Clear and effective communication between all parties. Everybody knows what you're doing, and you communicate that. Clarity between your personal roles and your elected roles. The reality is, you know, you're people, and you're elected. And you need to be able to distinguish when you make decisions really what you are. The ability to assess and evaluate decisions on a regular basis. I don't know what system we have in place for performance evaluation, but that's really critical. For every jurisdiction, you need to have a sense, essentially your pulse is about how things, things are working, well and not working, things that need to be corrected or not corrected. That gives you a sense as elected officials. What needs to be modified, what needs to be altered, what needs to be changed, what needs to be continued. The ability, and you have the ability by law to change directions based upon priorities, based upon different needs and different circumstances. And this is why you're elected. And finally, just the reliance and confidence on your staff. Because again, it's your staff that's here 30 hours a week, 40 hours a week, and do the needed great. They do not function independently or autonomically. They function through the policies that you create. So, your role is really critical to the well-being of a town. Your job is to do the policy, their job is to carry it out. Okay. You know, I had asked the mayor to submit to me.
Questions?
Please.
Questions? Comfortable?
It was quick, it was brief. It was a read and digest version of government, but right, right, we think to the point. I had asked the mayor, please. And she had asked you to give us what each of you thought was, was important for the town. And we don't know who you are, which makes it even better, because it's anonymous to us. In a nonremarkable way, but to you, you know, there are some issues that are common to many of you. There are some that are just, just different. Some of the issues that surfaced in our review of New Jersey was recreation, open space issues, was development of downtown issues, was relationship with the staff, because some were not sure what, what your roles were in relation to what the staff did. So, those are at least three issues, three topics, that I think, we think are worthy of discussion. The downtown development is an issue that will require some more, some more work. But that's something that you will, we will not, cannot do for you, but you will develop a strategy on how to do that. Recreation, open space, I think surfaced in two or three of, of the responses that you want to do more in terms of what your residents can participate in. And there was a fourth one, which was really to make your town the best town or some sort of county if possible. It, it didn't come out as, as visible as some of the others. Clearly, you all want to make sure that your town is reflected in a super positive way. So, that, which should be really part of the plan, how do you make your town? And your town is attractive now, let's be real. You just want to make it even more attractive. And the final issue is the issue of revenue and resources, which is always an issue. That it's conceivable that what you're collecting in terms of revenue now might decrease if your values decrease and people leave. You want to make sure that your economic base remains the same. It does not decrease, it does not diminish. And that's frankly an issue for every single town. So, those at least, we suggest to you would be at least the elements, preliminary elements of, of a plan for you, for you to consider. If you take just a minute, please, just to look at what you all said to each other, because you may be seeing this for the first time. You will see there is some, some commonality and some issues that are, that are just different. And we don't know who said what, it doesn't matter to us. These are ideas that elected officials said, they're important to be certain of. One thing we would emphasize, that in the relationship between you and, and the staff, that you're very clear in what your staff is supposed to do, and very clear what you're supposed to do. You really don't, though you're on government, you really don't do the day-to-day stuff. You should not be doing the day-to-day stuff. You have an administrator, you have staff, department directors. Rely on them to do that. If any issues or questions really should go to and through your administrator. You would not be intervening in departments without questions, issues, and problems. And, and no, that's because you're elected, you think you should do that. We understand that. You really, oh, you should not be doing that. So, if you work the process the way it's supposed to be worked, your staff will take care of whatever issues or concerns that your citizens raise to you.
Is there a process that you recommend? I mean, obviously, there's a good communication part of this plan, let's talk about that. Do you have examples of what best practices look like?
Ours would be if a citizen contacts you about an issue.
Is that what you're talking about? No.
No, I'm talking about, so if we codify a plan, the next piece is aligned to the government committees.
Yes.
That has to be done according to the rules.
Yes. And, and there's a step before that, right? Because in order to even get to the stage where you might codify something, you're going to have to engage your citizens in the process. And I don't, I don't know what processes you have in place for doing that, but it would be our experience and recommendation that the very first step is not to decide, but to invite the voices in. And you may already be there. You may already be on a path where you know how to invite the voices in, and they're, they're, you solicit them, and they come to you, and the cacophony of disagreement happens, and agreement happens. But, but if you start at the beginning of a strategic planning process, even, and I'm sure you've all done it in your professional life, so we're not meant to be preachy on this point, but it always starts with listening to the voices that you serve. And then, when you're rolling something out, it's not new news. It's what we've all been building toward, right? I don't know if that answers.
No, it, it does. And then, obviously, the next step is making sure that that voice is continued.
Correct.
Which is the, I think is going to be our hardest part.
And if you bring the citizens in, some citizens, you have, you've created and engendered some support for what you're pushing for. It's not just the six or seven of you. You've got some community input. And see, yeah, these are the things we really think are desirable and acceptable, and these are our aspirations. And they will argue in your behalf, these are the things that really should be done.
It's pretty messy.
Yeah, well, one of the things we're looking to do is a, a comprehensive recreation plan.
Okay.
And that's like a 10 or 11-month process with the public. And, you know, just getting all the key people.
Perfect.
So, we'd be doing that for the one item that keeps popping up is recreation and open space.
Right, right.
Yeah, but you're kind of saying for almost every issue, we should be doing something similar.
Our experience is the more you invite the public to participate, the less resistance you're going to have. Because you've created surrogates on your behalf.
It's a listening process always to build a strategic plan, right? And so, there, there's a process, if you want to pursue that, that we would step you through, that we would say, here's how we might start this. You may already, so we're not, again, preaching to you on how this should be done, but it should be at least an analysis of what you know about your city, and what you agree on, and what you don't agree on, and the threats that are currently there, and the opportunities, and regular SWOT analysis. And begin a visioning process that people can begin to coalesce around, well, I could give ground on this if I can also have that, and building that community in. Do you have suggestions on how to bring the community in as well? There's a lot of ways to do that. And so, again, we don't know enough about how you're already doing that, but yes, there's good processes that could be mimicked and replicated. You know, and, and again, I'm suspecting based on what you've provided as input to the plan that you have existing ways to reach into your community around these topics. There's probably a business group for the development portion of it. There's probably residential feedback on property taxes versus other kinds of development. There's probably open space.
We do a lot of surveys.
Not, not a bad place to start, right? If you have survey data, that's a great place to start. You know, if you think they're good surveys and there's valid research that was done underneath it, not a bad place to start. Not everybody has survey data, so.
I think one of the things that we struggle with with any survey we conduct is that, you know, there's always one group that's particularly interested in the topic.
Yes.
Yes.
So, that group is overrepresented in an online survey. And then, you know, the surveys that we've used in the past are also, you know, they're not like statistically secure. Somebody wants to go in and vote three times for themselves. They can vote three times on the survey. It's not like, you know, there's any kind of identification unless there's self-identification. So, I think that, you know, while surveys are a great tool, I think if we're going to be making policy decisions on surveys, we need to have some assurance that it's not either just, you know, like a self-selected group that's giving us all the information, or, you know, it's just that, that we can rely on the data that we're getting.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, that's why I brought it up, because I wanted more ideas, because I don't.
Anonymity is important.
Yeah.
And the rigorousness behind a survey is what makes it valid data.
Exactly, yeah.
Right, so, I mean, there are inexpensive ways to run more valid surveys than through a partisan group or even just a special interest group who might ask questions in a way that not intentionally biased, but may turn out to be biased.
And I, I think we have, I mean, we have occasionally very engaged populists, but a lot of times, we don't. So, I mean, it's balancing those two things, you know?
The, the survey that was done before we had the revitalization group, the, the one that had the 1,100 respondents.
Downtown development, yeah.
Right, that, that actually was keyed to your address, so you can only get one vote per address.
Oh, man, good.
So, that actually captured over one-third of the addresses. If you had 1,100 people, we have 2,500 households. Yeah, so that, as surveys go, that one wasn't pretty, wasn't bad. Although, it still was subject to the bias that you mentioned.
And the way the questions.
Some people just don't like to answer surveys for whatever reason.
Or they don't have computer access.
I just think going forward, it's something for us to consider as we, you know, develop more of these.
In final analysis.
That's a very good point.
You will pick who sits on your committees. The reality is, you have the authority. You may get a thousand people to answer the question. You have the capacity to pick who you think is really a representative group. And that really offsets frankly the influence of one particular group. You get to pick who sits on the, you've created the committees. You have that authority, no one else has that authority.
And that is in your code.
That is in your code. But you've opened up a process to make it transparent, which is good. But you also control the process to pick a representative sample of the population.
So, instead of just, you know, opening and saying, hey, anybody interested, show up.
No, you, you will pick.
Okay, here's someone from the Little League, here's someone from Senior Center, here's, yeah, someone from the library, that kind of thing.
That's yours.
The more insightful you can be about that, and knowing your population, obviously, the better input you're going to get. If that's what you're seeking, right? This is citizen input in the strategic process helps with the rollout piece later on.
Well, how do you make that representative? So, to use the example, one person from Little League and one person from the Senior Center, there might be 10 times more people in the Little League than in the Senior Center. So, how do you make, how do you balance that out?
Your population, right? You know the demographics of your population, and if you don't, we have it all online for you. And we're happy to give that to you, it's free.
If you have information, send it to us.
It's, no, I, I will give you the online database. It's njdatabook dot rutgers.edu. And it's an online database, it goes back 38 years, showing your demographic information, your.
NJ Data Book.
NJdatabook dot rutgers.edu. It's free, we give it to all towns, it's free. It gives you your election results, it gives you your poverty rates, it gives you your housing and residential rates, your tax base. It is not going to be everything you want and the detail you want, but it gives you a good overview of what your town is.
And when, when was it done? I mean, what's the?
We do it every year.
We do it, we started it 38 years ago.
Oh, wow.
We're, we're the only state in the country, one good thing for Rock, I mean, for New Jersey at least, maybe Rutgers too, but still. We, you know, states call us all the time, say, how you did this. Well, luckily, somebody started collecting it 38 years ago, but yeah.
So, so just what I'm hearing you say though, then, is these committees ought to be proportional to the population.
If that's what you're worried about, yes. I mean, if you can be.
I'm not worried, I just want to make sure it's fair.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter if you're 3,000 senior citizens and 200 Little League people. You get to pick a configuration of the committee. You may want representation, one from each. Doesn't matter, one is five times larger than the other. You want some representation from the group, that's it.
So, for example, that database measures children 1 to 5, and it also members residents over 65.
Sorry.
So, it'll give you a different, and it's a trend, so you can look at the trend data.
And this is not a group that's voting, this is a group that's giving you input. So, if it's one, if there's 3,000 Little League parents, and one is the head of the board, he obviously is speaking for his group.
And one thing you do.
You always have the principal speak for their groups. That's, that's the role of an advocate.
Supposed to go back to their group.
The groups that you form are advisory to you. They do not have independent authority or autonomy to make decisions. They advise you, you make the ultimate decision.
Right.
Because that's why you're elected.
So, it's really just to get the input of the group.
Are you suggesting a special committee to create a vision for Burnsville? Or are you suggesting the control of, because you, I think there were two topics that merged here.
Maybe, yeah.
We're talking about committee appointments. Or are we talking about creating a separate committee to create a vision for?
An ad hoc, we're talking an ad hoc?
I, I don't know.
I don't know either, because it really depends how you operate, right? So, we're, we're assuming, because you have multiple committees in place, you'd have a natural place to go for your constituents, that may not be true. You may decide that you are the committee for the strategic plan, and that you'll have input on open space and business and taxes and board of it.
I think that makes more sense if you ask me.
Because anything else will be here in 12 months and nothing will be done.
There, there is some evidence that might be true. That'd be history.
We want to slow things down for the committee.
Right. And it's not that you can make strategy, strategy fast, right? I mean, you all know that from your private lives, so.
Well, you mentioned the private lives at times, so, and you mentioned the, so is this essentially the same as the private sector? We can take the same steps? Or is there a specific set of rules that would govern this, you know, borough government like this?
Rules would be overstating it. But what you can say is that in a private sector, you're making decisions with the common focus of a bottom line typically, or a market share number. In the public sector, you're operating for the public good and your constituents. It's messy, it takes longer, it's not as direct. So, to the extent you get to walk into work every day and make decisions and walk out and know they'll be executed, that's not how the public works, right? So, it takes a little bit longer. Process-wise, it's not so different, but who you involve is different.
Is there a best practice for going through that, that you guys have, that you could provide us a template for?
Helmets and vests.
Is what's that?
Helmets and vests.
We can show you what other people have done, right? I mean, you know, really, really.
That would be helpful.
It's very thoughtful what you're doing. Not everyone approaches this as a strategic plan. I mean, a lot of times, people are just arguing about who gets to do what. You guys are way ahead of that, that's great. But, yeah, we can show you what other people have done and make suggestions, right? Like how we would suggest you approach visioning, how you might approach the process of gaining input and doing sessions. Because there is really good, you know, of course, now you're talking to academics. So we think there's really good data on how to do this. You might say, oh, that's too messy for us, but.
I personally think that's the way to go. I think you need to do this and I think you need to walk through it. You might as well follow a best practice if they're available.
Agreed.
And other than a strategic plan, it's fairly comprehensive. You just might wanna focus on some issues or topics that are germane to, to your interest. Might be recreation, might be downtown development. Might be two to four topics that are important for the council. And your committees then would be structured to consider the four critical topics. It's not a strategic plan that considers a lot of stuff, but it does consider specifically what you're looking for and looking at.
I mean, from my perspective, I haven't talked to everybody in the council about this individually. I don't wanna make decisions that are individualized. I think there's enough information or enough priority here that, that's aligned. Let's start making decisions based on a hierarchy of what we all believe is important. And if we keep with a simple plan in place, I think our decision process becomes much easier. Not only for us, but also our committees, which is a big thing.
There's some commonality here.
There's a lot of.
There's a lot, yeah.
There really is. You're thinking luck in many ways.
It won't be all common. There, there will be differences.
But that's okay.
That's, that's normal in a decision process.
I think we were talking about when a citizen contacts me and what my next step should be, right? Was that where we kind of were before?
That was one issue.
That was the split place, right? Strategy versus operational, right? Do you wanna go back to it?
A little bit.
Okay.
Only because I feel like I wanna be accessible to everyone at all times.
Absolutely.
And I wanna solve each problem one at a time. Because some of them are small enough that can be solved quickly just by me going to my administrator or my clerk. And, you know, I guess as far as strategy goes, I don't know if you've ever heard of this Strong Towns website? It's called Strong Towns. Anyway, so the, the whole premise is that, you know, if you want a strong town, you're just gonna solve each problem one at a time. And all the little problems, although they might seem minimal, you know, the pothole being the classic example, you have to solve each one of those one at a time, just like the downtown revitalization. One's gonna take a big, you know, Band-Aid and the other one is a quick one. So I guess how do we strategize for that?
Man. Then, then you go next.
You go first.
You know, the, the way we used to think about these problems might be different about how you think about it now. I don't know if anybody saw the New York Times article this weekend about potholes. You triggered it on this. So, so there's an app created by a bunch of students at MIT and Harvard and in Israel to, you know, report potholes. And now all of a sudden, we have sped up the process of reporting the potholes. So while you would like to take those questions, that your DPW would probably be a lot happier if they could just get the data consolidated because an app was picking it up. So we can answer and respond to citizens without having to do it through our own personal position in the town, right? So that, the idea is make it faster, make it more accessible, but crowdsource the data so that we can feed the departments who are running the town to fix the problems. That doesn't mean you shouldn't fix them. It just means it gets the data to the people who can actually do what they need to do to fix it. Because you don't do that, right? You're the executive body, I mean, the legislative body.
I would love to fill a pothole. But it's just not.
Not practical, yeah.
But that does involve an alteration, maybe, about how you think this yourself as an elected official. You're not the DPW person. And you have an administrator to make sure, apropos what you said and in support of what you said, you have a structure to make sure the services get provided. It's not yours to do that.
Not to fix the pothole.
Not, that's it. Inform the appropriate parties and hold them accountable. Make sure it gets fixed.
Yeah, I mean, and it just goes to, the residents should know who to contact. And so we should probably have a better communication so that they don't, yeah.
And if you're still at the human-to-human contact for potholes, there's probably an IT infrastructure move here for you. I was thinking the same, yeah.
Right, exactly.
And there's all that app-based now, so it's not as expensive.
Yeah, what happens sometimes is then, you know, if, if people know they can just pick up the phone and call, you know, one of us, it's a lot easier and then you're taking all these calls.
And responsibility.
Right. And it takes away. Yeah, I understand about the pothole. Have you called this number? You know, that's where you should report it rather than us saying, I'll fix, I'll get on it for you. Hang up the phone. Pick up, call DPW. Call back. Did you, did they do it? Did they come?
The missing step is you can report it. Citizen calls you to say, there's a pothole on the street.
Right.
You will make sure it's addressed. You call the administrator, who in turn will call the DPW person to say, there's a pothole on the street.
And I want you to use an app. And I want you to use an app.
Do you know what the apps are called?
No, but there's a lot of them. So we, we're happy to give you that list of.
But it does redefine your role in relation to.
And you have to be wanting to do that. You may not want to. You might wanna have your citizens calling you, so we don't wanna intervene.
Yeah, we don't wanna stop that.
That's your decision, yeah. I'm just saying, so what a strategic planning process does is open up those kinds of ideas. Like, do we really wanna be doing that? Or do we want our citizens to be coming to talk to us on committees about parks and recreation or senior citizen centers or things that might change the community in the long term? I'm not saying potholes don't, but.
They're important.
But they do take a lot of time, yeah. Sorry.
Good?
Where do we start?
Okay.
Well, we weren't sure what you'd wanna do, so we just thought we'd come in and talk to you basically about how this structure works, right? Like, it would be a strategic planning process.
Does anybody think that we shouldn't do this?
It's okay if you wanna talk about it without us in the room. It would take no personal offense.
Before we invited you in, we, we had that discussion and everybody, actually, you guys weren't here yet, that's why. But I think the rest of us thought this was worth doing. And I think we kind of agreed that it should be a separate day meeting for, I don't know, three, four hours, a half-day, whatever.
Flesh-shod it.
That we can just focus on this and, you know, what our strategy is.
And you'd have to think about who you wanna have there with you thinking, like who from the staff.
It should be the administrator.
Does it need to be an open session or can it be a closed conference?
Look at your.
We talked about this.
You have to do it open, but.
Yeah, it's gotta be open.
But we can do it open, but without public input, right? So we could do it, the public can wa, can be there and attend, but it's not public engagement.
Yeah, they can, they can come into a public session.
There will be public engagement as part of the process, but at the visioning or the, at the outset, it would be the council, the mayor, you know, and, and the public would be able to, to, to see what's going on. So it would be open in that sense.
Yes.
But it wouldn't be interactive with the public at that point in the process.
It's good to do it someplace else, not here. You know, in a totally different environment that, you know, is. Well, that'd be nice. You know, we could do lunch. We could have cocktails.
We'd love to come.
But you'd wanna think who else you wanna have in representing your constituents and that, because you by yourselves might not be enough for not vent in any derogatory way at all. But just from a visioning standpoint, you might need to have more people in the room than just the seven of you.
So obviously, those two gentlemen's over there.
Yes, for sure, those two.
Yeah.
And, and your clerk.
Would you have any citizens in the room? Would you have additional people from local government?
From other committees?
If you have a meeting, the ones that are in charge will show up. They will come eventually.
But they're trying, but who to invite to participate, yeah.
There's a, there's a component of being loud and there's a component of being productive.
Not that we have that many departments, but department heads.
I'd ask. I don't know.
Sure. Would you, would you reach out beyond the municipal government? In other words, would you have the head of the planning board or something like that?
You, you also want to, from a practical point of view, wanna limit the discussions so you get something from it. The more people you have, the more complicated the discussion is.
I was gonna ask about facilitation of such meetings.
Yeah, I would want, I would want an external facilitator. Would you guys do those things?
That's what you do, yes.
Yes, and, but we would not be content at that point then. We would be strictly facilitation. So there'd be fifteen or twenty people tops, right?
Yeah, I think of the twenty people, sorry, it gets to be too.
Right. You can divide. You'll be broken into groups the whole time. So that allows you to, I mean, if you're comfortable with that, you're gonna have to, you'd have to consider how you wanna approach them.
Can we make that decision on who attends now? Are we close enough? Or do we need to talk about it?
I mean, we, you know, if you think, obviously, it would be you two.
Yep.
I like the idea of, you know, like a planning board chair and the.
Board of adjustments.
Board of adjustment chair. I think it's, everybody comfortable with that?
Rec chair needs to be there.
Recreation, some of the, you know, because I really, we're talking about recreation.
We're at thirteen people.
I don't know if we have depart, like, you know, obviously Doug. He's our engineer.
My suggestion would be, there are, well, your priorities first. And invite people to the topics that you think are germane.
People who will add to your conversation.
Yeah, to the discussion, not to the particular topic. That's your story. That's your story, right?
So the folks that are relevant to these topics should be.
Right.
That's, that's it.
People who can inform the conversation, right? It's, it's not so much at this point that you'll be making decisions in that first stage, but you wanna make sure you're hearing voices, right? So and to the extent you have any surveys that are valid, I don't mean like it has to be completely perfectly statistically valid, but it should have some validity built into it. Then that is important data to bring in as well for everybody participating.
So if I was taking to this list, I would say the chair of the new revitaliz, revitalization ad hoc committee?
That's the mayor.
So I think you should come.
That'd be me.
Maybe a member from that team?
Well, we have two, there are two.
We're all here.
Well, yeah, there's.
Board of adjustments and planning board and rec.
Yeah, because if you're talking downtown, that's planning board and board of adjustment. If you're talking recreation, open space, that's rec and probably open space, somebody from.
Well, maybe all the statutory committees should have someone there.
Yes.
I mean, just because it seems to, you don't wanna. Can we break it into like the input portion of it and the decision portion of the, of the four-hour session?
You won't make a decision at that session.
No.
You'll be gathering data.
I think what you're trying to do is control the conversation a little bit, Tom, right? So we have official conversation, we have input gathering.
And then you take it back and you make decisions based on the data you got.
So you're saying the first three or four-hour meeting is about gathering input?
Right, and helping prioritize by breaking you into different groups to talk to each other about that. It's painful, I know.
You're saying, you're, you're kind of going through, again, what's, what are the opportunities? What are the challenges?
And hearing from people you may not.
From each of those people in, yeah.
Then, then maybe we shouldn't necessarily have the same people. It gets kind of incestuous after a while. It's the same folks talking to the same folks. We gotta reach out to some folks.
Well, no, so if you have department heads and the planning board and those people, you know, I would like to hear from them, what they, we don't talk to them that much.
Well, that's true about the planning board and the board of adjustment.
We don't really get to talk to them or, you know, or, I don't know, I mean.
The board of ed is listed whoever respondent one is, board of education.
Yeah, that was a topic that surfaced. I neglected to, to, because it came out, at least I think, in two. Because board of ed requires money. And there's a certain autonomy to what they do. And there's a relationship between the town and them that needs to be very clear and precise and workable, and that's it.
Is there a, for reasons of president of board of ed or Burnsville resident, though?
No.
No.
Should that?
No.
No.
Wait, say that again. What was your question?
A board of ed member.
He asked if it was a.
The president of the board of ed is not a resident.
Board of ed couldn't be included, so that's why I looked at the attorney.
We have, we have a district.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're a regional district. So we have representatives from the other towns. And this year and last year, the president was from one of the, sending.
Other towns.
But we could certainly ask a board member who's in town.
Which is not like I would for somebody that's been on the board longer.
Well, the only other voice that's hard to codify in a list is how you hear from your citizens, right?
Yeah.
Your constituents.
But wouldn't that come after we kind of speak to the key people?
As, as much as you can build your constituent voices in early, it will save you time later.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I have to think about if, if there's not a natural place that that comes to you.
Trying to think of who.
I mean, I'm, I'm thinking that if we have this retreat kind of thing and we narrow down what we're hearing from all the other people we've included, then we've got, you know, a list. And at that point, we take that to the public.
That's possible, yeah.
And then get the public involved and say, this is what, you know, came out of our strategic plan. Now we wanna hear how you feel about these issues. I don't know.
That's the messiest part.
I think I like that better. You're not gonna get any one citizen that can speak for the citizens of Burnsville, you know?
You are, you are in effect. That's who you want.
You're in. You're the voices.
And something, you know, may come up that's not on this list that we didn't even think of, but everyone else that we invited says, you don't know this is an issue, you know? Because they're black people. But I think, you know, if that's, if so, if we've got planning, I'm just trying to write these down, board of adjustment.
I have seventeen now.
Who do you have?
I have the administrator, lawyer, clerk, Doug, rec department or chair committee, or chair from the committee, a revitalization member. I didn't know where we landed on that one. The board of adjustments, planning board, board of ed rep, and then I put a question mark on the library.
Would you want somebody from environmental, since that's a, that was a commissioner, is a commissioner?
It is a commissioner.
Environmental or?
Each of us represent, like, each of us is a liaison, right? So does that count? You know what I mean? So.
Maybe the environmental commission person who's on open space, because then you'd get both together.
Yeah, I don't think that person's relatively new on open space, so. We just got somebody this year.
What about Joanna Wester?
Back and forth person?
Yeah, I think so. I can't remember actually. I'd say it's, so we should check. But I do think if we're gonna have rec, which I think is important to have, then, because all the money's coming from open space for rec, I think they too should be represented.
Yeah. Did you have open space out there?
Um, no, I did not have open space, no.
I had it on my notes, but I didn't hear it on your list.
Yeah, no, because it wasn't mentioned yet. I can add it. The rec department or the chair, the committee, the, the chair, there's a new chair this year on rec.
But he's been on rec a long time.
Yes, yeah. So would it, it would be that or representative, a representative from the department?
Well, for sure, somebody from planning.
There is, I mean, the department is two people.
Yeah.
So I'd rather have the committee, I think, the, the chair.
Yes, we would also recommend if a person from the finance department participate. Most of these things.
Leslie.
Leslie.
Because it involves money, spending while you're getting money.
Yeah.
Yes.
He or she will tell you what you can and can't do.
Oh, she's good at that.
Yes.
Turns out, as you know, to be important.
What, what count are we up to, Gina?
Gotta be real close to twenty.
At nineteen, I think. Is it nineteen?
Someone will be able to make it. Someone will have the balloon. It'll happen, yeah.
We're good with that assortment?
I think per your discussion, it's, it's a good starting point. And then you gotta bring the ideas to the public. Maybe they'll, maybe they'll like what we say and maybe they want, you know?
Yeah.
It's not the end of the process, it's the beginning of the process.
We're to talk about process.
It's just to narrow down.
The end of the process, nobody knows. When I think you're engaging in a process that's constructed and productive, it gets you to where I think you really wanna be. The outcome, no one can predict.
Right.
What you're doing, we think the right thing about. Let's learn to talk about this stuff.
Then outreach will matter a lot.
Do we wanna do?
No word suggestion, which you could take or not, but do we want somebody who can speak to the history of Burnsville? Dan Lincoln, I was never specifically, you know, who kind of then can reflect on where we were as we talk about where we're going.
So you're a local historian?[1551.68]
Okay, I guess he is kind of our local historian, but I don't know if that.
Well, something considered, I think we need to nail down all twenty, twenty-one names tonight.
Yeah. No, and I was also thinking about Chamber and downtown Burnsville.
Yeah, you want your business community involved in this. Absolutely, not just the residents that are important, but you want your business community to be a part of the plan. Because they will support it, they will oppose it.
Well, that, no, that could be the person that's on the, one of the business people that's on the revitalization, or the redevelopment committee. They, they could be the same person. So put, yeah, so from the redevelopment, we'll take the member who's the business representative. Because, I mean, I'm the Chair, so I'm there already. And that way, that covers both.
I, I hope this isn't a rhetorical statement, this sort of replies to what Tom said. Not only is this the beginning of the process, we need to select the priorities that are relevant now. And those priorities are supposed to change.
They can change.
And, and I, I think that's important for us to communicate globally that, look, if, if, if something isn't included in today's priority, this means never going to be prior.
Yeah. I was gonna ask about updates. How, how often they get.
You want this to be a fluid process.
Right.
Process that evolves based upon, if you're gonna ask people to talk, you need to listen to what they have to say. So you come in with an initial plan that's subject to modification based upon what they tell you. You may, you may keep ninety percent of it, you may keep twenty percent of it. But you've engaged in a process that's fruitful.
Well, I think Chad's even talking about, let's say then, at the end of a six months or ten months, we come up with and we publish, everybody communicate what we did and what the outcome of our work is. But the question is then, ten months into the future beyond that, or two years in the future beyond that, how do we revisit and update, make sure it's fresh for future councils?
The reality is, once you adopt a plan.
It has to be iterative.
It has, you have to assess it on a continuous basis.
Right, but you have to give it a chance.
It's a living document, it's something you keep.
Absolutely.
And I'm saying that, Tommy, because everybody's not gonna get everything. I think you said this classically about the open space. It's about how do we prioritize what we're doing now?
Yeah.
In order to do that, we have to communicate that it's going to change.
Yeah.
Or else people just don't see that.
But it's not a one and done. It's, it's in the document that's always in front of you, that you're always, you know, relooking at and saying, this didn't work, you know, let's move on to the next thing, and.
Which is so important to start with those strategicals.
You have time to succeed or fail.
Yes.
And you, you know, you can't be doing your five-year plan every year. So there has to be some sort of optimal time when you revisit it, and you don't want to revisit it before then. Unless there's an urgent, you know, emergency or something.
Everything changes at a faster pace now, right? So you're, you're right that things have to be given a chance to survive and go. And you have to be flexible as an executive body to understand that things change. We have a topolap now. We have, you know, a, a stock market rise, a stock market crash. We have real estate that's strong, real estate that's not. So your plan also has to be flexible. But you're not wrong that you need some time for plans to take hold, and yet they have to be living.
Yeah. Actually, with School Board, we used to do it every year. We'd go back just and go over, do an, you know, every year we would do a four-hour retreat and go back over the whole thing.
Doesn't mean you have to change it.
Nope, no, it does not.
No, but it's just looking back.
It's also a touchstone, right?
Yes, it's looking back saying, how did we do this past year?
Correct, right.
And where are we going forward?
That's fine, you're, you're assessing what, what didn't, what made you take a whiff, but you're not necessarily changing your priorities, which is what I thought you were saying.
But priorities over time can change. So you're talking about a real estate market that changed. All of a sudden, the real estate market, the market's recovered in this town.
Right.
The focus isn't necessary anymore.
Or you may find that your resources are different as a result of where the real estate market is and where your ratables are.
But I, I think on a yearly basis, you can make a judgment as to, okay, are we tweaking this? Are we going, or do we have to turn the boat in a different way and turn the boats harder?
Yeah, I mean, to me, this vision.
Your appointed staff is really critical. Because they will do an assessment on your behalf, answering the question that you're raising. What's changing? What circumstances are changing? What's changed in this situation that merits our attention? Population up, population down, school population growing by fifty percent. What's happening that we need to handle that? And that's really not fully your job. That's.
The staff.
Thank you. Staff job. They bring to you things you need to think about.
Yeah, what did you say, Gina?
I was just saying, could, this vision and this strategic plan should impact, it, it should directly impact the budget and what we do.
Yes.
And what we invest in, and where we focus. So every year, when we're doing the budget cycle, we should also be doing this prior.
No, I, I'm gonna disagree with that, because that, that, we're talking about strategy. Strategy's long-term, you're talking about tactics if you're talking about the year-to-year budget.
No, the budget, the year-to-year budget is, I mean, it's a plan, right? I learned this in my training on January eleventh. That it is, it's a long, it's your long-term plan. And if you are very focused from a short-term perspective, just on the budget, you're gonna end up long-term, potentially not doing the right thing.
Your budget reflects priorities.
Priorities.
Your budget reflects your priorities.
But there's an operational budget, and then there's a strategic turn in the budget, right?
Maybe it's just me, but I have a hard time thinking that my priority today is gonna be drastically different from my, if I have a priority, a town's priority doesn't move that fast. The priority next year is gonna be the same as the priority this year.
If we chose right, I'd agree with you a hundred percent.
Potentially, yeah. I mean, I think we have some big issues that we have to, that we have to address.
Have all the data available to you, you can make great decisions, right?
As much as I love them to.
The only time you change is when you're wrong.
Well, that's never happened.
I understand.
I have no experience with that.
Oh, I just have one last.
We just have more experience with being wrong.
Well, the time.
Sometimes the biggest innovations come from being really wrong.
Christine was, Christine was out there.
Of the towns that you've worked with, can you give us an example of one that's really, like, mastered this? And maybe we can review it or take a look at?
No. We'd give you towns to look at.
A good example?
Yeah, we could definitely give you towns to look at.
Towns have asked us, by and large, primarily for a relationship between the elected and appointed officials. What are the rules? What are the boundaries? What should they be doing or not? So we've done this in other towns. There's been a conflict, and there might be one here, we're not sure, where though you're elected, you don't run, though you run, you do the policy, you don't fill the potholes, you know, you don't ride the buses, you don't do the garbage trucks, that's what the staff does. And it is a conventional problem, where elected officials don't always say, you do policy, you don't do the services. And if you, if you get that out of this discussion, then I think we've done our job. That's been the locus of most of the discussions we've had with the towns.
That's a problem here.
No, you guys are really very impressive, yeah.
Then you're okay.
My mouth tells us to.
My bigger concern is that if we do good work, is to make sure through the committees that this gets pulled through.
And, and the design of your process will help facilitate or not that.
Because most of them are appointed and they have a term.
There is a secondary consideration that we've not talked about. It's the strategic plan about your marketing and your public education. What you do is, is an elected official. You just want to make sure that your residents know, we've done this, we've embarked on this, this is a priority. And I don't know what the communication is between you and the rest of the town. You need some processes, some systems, some mechanisms whereby you can communicate with them on a regular basis, telling them what you think is important, what you're doing about some of the issues, you know, that surface. Some towns are better than other towns. Again, I'm not, I don't know what you do, but that is an element of a strategic plan. You want to make sure people know that, yeah, this is what we're doing, this is important. We're addressing concerns that you raised to us.
Yeah.
Well, I think to follow on your point about the budget, I think whenever we get this in place to have sort of that, revisit it annually, it has to be early in the budget process. So otherwise, this needs to be relevant. We set the budget, and you talk about it in July, and, you know, does elections, it will change, it becomes, this is an exit for utilities, would have to be like almost about reorg, because the new people would be there. You know, you could have some continuity versus otherwise, it's just.
Yeah.
And took for too long, I think, this town spent too much time spinning its wheels, and we really wanted something self-sustaining and sort of results-oriented. So it has to be timed with the things that create results, like the budgeting process.
In a short amount of time.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, sometimes pressure brings all things into focus, so.
That's the reality of it.
Really, the budget reflects your priorities, it really does.
It does.
It has to be early, not too late, because it, it is an iterative process, you know, we do every week, you know?
I mean, I think the right timing for that, John, not to talk about the process going forward, election cycle ends, and we know who the incumbents will be.
That's all I've been, you gotta go into maybe early November.
Yeah, so early November.
Because, you know, the people will be changing over, so, you know, I thought about that.
You invite the new elected officials in?
Yep, that's a good process.
Because they'll be voting on the budget come January one, whatever it is.
You have a January one cycle. January is a good sample. That's your budget cycle.
No, but the new people, which reorg.
Right, no, the budget.
The appointment of new elected officials.
Yeah, I meant in a larger sense, you know, they sit these chairs out of January one.
January, okay.
So, yeah, I think the timing, that would be, would be key, just to have, you know, some continuity and, you know.
One, just to make sure you're still, the priorities are still the same priorities.
Well, exactly.
Yeah, that's a really good idea.
Ideally, we'll solve problems, and, you know, they will evolve to other things, I would hope.
Because it's hard to make those choices in a vacuum, you know, to say, well, you get yours and you don't. Why? Well, you know, this way you have a, an explanation.
Yeah. Yeah, and capital spend, get aside.
Especially with capital.
Special capital, yeah.
Okay.
I think we're done.
So what we probably then need is to find a date.
Yes. We'll work with you on the process.
Yeah.
We're not here just as one night, but we just wanted to talk to you about the process.
We're happy to help if it's useful. We're also, you know, you're not.
You don't need us if you don't want us.
We're the state university, we're all here to help.
We need an external associate.
Yes, yeah.
So we're happy to help with that, and have done that.
So if we can kind of figure out what a date would be, that we can all get together and get enough people that it all matches and that you're free, we'll.
Yeah, if you give us a couple options to deal with, that's always better. If you can only come up with one, that's less likely to work.
What, what kind of lead time do you need?
A few weeks for sure. I mean, we both teach.
Three years.
Yeah.
We'll be looking at a night, day, weekend?
I don't know, what works for, what do you guys do usually?
We both commit to, we work with executive students who are full-time working students, so a lot of Saturday mornings work with students. So, that's not ideal, Saturday mornings.
So you're saying things other than Saturday night?
Saturday mornings are really not gonna work.
What if you do like a late afternoon? I don't know.
That's fine.
We don't teach in the afternoon.
Early, maybe do a four to eight and bring in sandwiches or something like that.
Yeah, then work around your schedules and figure out what works.
We'll work with you.
Popping open calendars and figuring it out right now, we could.
No, well, we've got all these other players to consider, so.
Hurdy cats, as they say.
Yeah, someone, someone here must be really good at that, we leave it to them.
Yeah, but in all real. We're not gonna get all these cats in.
Yeah, there'll be some people who can't make it, that's the fact.
These other people, if you can't make it, center, right?
Yeah. Or at least give some options.
We're never gonna find a day where twenty people, so maybe we just try to get a settlement, and then everybody else can send a rep if they can't make it.
That's right.
Yeah, we'll store with us, okay.
And then we get our calendars, and that's it, I mean, and, and, and ruckers' calendars.
If they have an agenda, they, they can't be, they can provide comments, you know, relevant.
Send somebody else for that.
Or they might even find somebody that you find acceptable as well, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that would be.
It is, if you don't. All right, good.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, yeah.
Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, we're looking forward to this.
Yeah, it was great to hear you guys thinking so strategically. Not always true.
Oh, really? Okay, good.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Already, did you already?
All right, so we have minutes from December nineteenth. So that was before you guys were on the council, so do they get to vote or not? If they're December minutes, can new people vote?
They can.
So we've got December nineteenth, January second, and January thirteenth.
I'll move.
I have to abstain from the nineteenth, there's something going on here.
Yeah, I'll abstain from the second, I won't care the other.
You legally don't have.
You don't have to abstain.
You're certainly free to.
Well, it just doesn't make sense of something where it wasn't there, it was there.
All right, I'll second all of it. There we go.
Okay, voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? All right, so they are good. So now we have an open session. Would anyone from the public like to be heard? Al?
Yeah, Mary Jane.
Come on up.
Sure. Al Schoffler, one oh nine, Mary Road. We had gotten, there's some emails going around about attending tonight and maybe requesting the council re- revisit the turf usage fees. Okay, the, I'm on the Rec Committee, and originally, we had recommended that we waive them for now. Because when we built those fees, I think the mission was a little different than it might be now as far as putting money away for replacing the turf. Back when we did that, I think the scope was a little bit larger. So I, we're, I'd like to ask you if you could revisit that. And I'd certainly volunteer to head that up on the, on the Rec Committee and form a subcommittee or whatever needs to be done, so that we can revisit that and maybe reallocate those fees. Certainly to try to make it more affordable for the youth football, Little Eagle Cross.
Thank you.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? Why would the, the need to replace the field, help me out, you said that the priorities were different, because you implied that we no longer need to have a field.
The scope is larger. Originally, the, the fees were to include improvement of facilities throughout the borough, not just the turf field.
No, that's, that's true.
The, the fees were to.
If we look at the minutes from the Rec Committee, I could find those for you.
If you're talking about a Rec Committee meeting, if you're talking about a Rec Committee meeting, then I don't know what was said in the Rec Committee meeting.
Let me back up. We were tasked with putting a fee structure together for the turf field for, to not only afford the replacement in ten years, but also to make improvements throughout the borough and other facilities. And that's how, that's what we built.
Okay.
But I can, I can say that as far as the council was concerned, we were only talking about it in terms of replacing the field.
Right, I think there was a disconnect when the, when the administration changed a little bit.
Yeah, that's what, the origin, our content was that using those fees would help, because at that point, we didn't have the referendum, we just had that twenty-five percent of the open space. And so with that, we wanted to use for projects. So we felt the fees could be set aside for the replacement, because we didn't have other sources.
Right.
So I think what you're saying is now that we have other sources.
That too, yeah.
You may not want to.
But do we have a bit, but?
Well, because we now have the option with the open space amount that we collect the taxes, we can use them for either.
Well, we can, can we use it to replace the field? I thought their open space funds, they, they don't have to be.
Improvement of.
Theoretically, we can. Improvement.
Yeah, we can use for development, acquisition and development, so I guess.
Okay, that's the point, is, is replacement, development, or is that maintenance?
Well, I, I think that's a policy.
I think if you replace a whole thing, it's considered capital.
Capital.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, if you repair it and fix a piece of it.
Your maintenance would not, I believe.
Regardless, I'm just asking if you could, you could take a look at this again and reevaluate this in, in the interest of our youth sports.
I, I think there's a bigger, bigger issue here. I'm glad that you're here, thank you for coming to the Rec Committee. Look, there needs to be a global assessment of how we take this. We're talking about the rec plan moved from A to Z. I think all of this needs to be included in that. How do we use our fields? How do we pay for our fields? How do we do improvements over time?
Totally agree.
All those things need to be thought of together, not just independently.
It should include our open space funding and maintenance as well.
Well, I think the goal was, we wanted funds to put aside every year, so that we'd save up for, at some point, we could replace it. So that was, whether it's from the fees, whether it's from the open space money, somehow we would have the money in fifteen or twenty years to replace it.
Right. And Mary Jane, is the Rec Committee the place where all those analyses would happen? I'm guessing so, right?
I think Al did it the first time.
So in regards to all the things we're talking about, field usage, how do we, how do we best use our fields and make sure that we have kids on them? How do we best maintain our facilities, improve them over time? And obviously, they're gonna be part of the, of the master plan.
Yes, when we do the comprehensive plan, that, I guess, Recreation, you had actually started it when you brought Branstad to us. Is, that's what we are gonna use some of those funds for, is to actually do that study and that whole plan, and they'll be collecting all that data. And there will be plenty of opportunity for residents, sports teams, seniors, everybody to have input on that, in that process, so that we get a whole community-wide plan for how we use all our fields and open spaces and parks.
But I think to Councilwoman Queen's point, though, is, do we do this as a collective across the board
across the board for everything in conjunction with this larger study? Or we do, make decisions piecemeal? Is that what you're asking?
I, I personally, look, there are some decisions that have been made piecemeal. I think that's unavoidable, but I think a movement into having more of a strategic look, we just had an hour talking about how we create a strategic plan for the borough, trying to make these decisions consistent in a way that we have all the information collectively. I think I, I personally make better decisions that way.
But I would ask in the short term, if we could reevaluate the, the turf usage fees now and waive them for the youth organizations?
I think that'd be a valid sort of thing to look at because even, even whoever we pick, Branstad or the other folks, you know, it's a level in the process. So, I mean, it would benefit, they said, yeah, go ahead, it wouldn't be beneficial doing 2021, so, so probably worth studying at least.
How much, Tom, do you know, I mean, I don't know if you know, if you're on finance, how much did we raise from the turf?
Eighty-five hundred dollars. Actually, it's eighty-four and change, eighty-four sixty or something was the turf.
That was last year's rental.
I think we need to be cautious though, because there were some scheduling issues when we didn't, we didn't get feedback in time. We had people that might've used it, the fees could have been higher if they, you know, depending, so I think that's, that's a good point of reference, that's the actual data point from this year, this past year, but I don't know how predictive that is.
Yeah, we, we lost a lot of revenue.
But we need, it has to be something that it's not, it's equitable too, to, you know, just to our kids and other groups that may want to pay a lot of money for it. So we got, it would be a window, you know, I don't know how the prioritization would go, but that's something you guys can take around. Thank you, I'm willing to listen.
Okay.
The one last point, you, you had mentioned that you want to head up the subcommittee. I think that's really got to be decided by the chair or the rec committee, with the rec committee, how that gets done.
What, no, there's, there'll be an, an overall steering committee for this process?
No, no, he, within the rec committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Within the rec, yeah, that's, that's the, we don't make that decision, they make that decision.
Anyone else from the public? Mike?
Hi. Mike Long, 22 Crest Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Sorry, I missed my colleague Al's comments running up the stairs through the parking lot. I am the vice president of the Somerset Hills Lacrosse Club. I'm also on board of the Somerset Hills Mount Nearest Football Program. I coach in both sports and I have for years. Many of you have gotten to know through this, some of you have gotten to know the events around the town, and I really appreciate and respect all of your volunteerism and service for this town. And I'd like to just point out before I say what I, what I would like to say is, the, the sports communities for football lacrosse, and I think this is true, I don't represent the other communities, but the other parts of the other youth sports leagues, but I think it's true for all of us that we do also support some sort of comprehensive understanding of what's going on in the town, how resources are allocated, what sacrifices need to be made, what difficult choices we all have to make and defend and fight for, or not fight in there, or, or advocate for. That having been said, the turf fees have become a flashpoint, a political football. And the youth sports that use that rectangular field, because not all sports do, have become part of that political football, unfortunately. I understand it is an asset that the town needs to ultimately replace. There are many assets the town needs to ultimately replace, and it remains obscure to me and confusing why this one asset has been selected and singled out for a user fee approach. We, I don't think we do that with the library, we don't do that with many parts of our schools, we don't do that with our roads. We build a nice, beautiful park down in Kuanas for $300,000. We don't charge each little kid that goes and uses that park, but it's going to need to be maintained, replaced and worked on over the years. I'm not here advocating for user fees for that park. I am here, believe me, that is not the small community that I'm a part of and one of the part of. I am here advocating for the, for the members of, of the leagues that I'm part of, that are all hundreds of families, 300 kids in a lacrosse program, boys and girls, including down to age five, 150 participants in the football program, including two, more than almost two dozen girls in the cheer program. So this is not about gender, this is not, I mean, obviously, I represent two particular sports, but it's big. It's a lot of people that are affected by this. The programs are not, uh, we try to keep our registration fees very low. We try to, we, we, we have hardship exemptions for people that can't afford it. We take steps to try and provide equipment for people who can't get it. We have a lot of capital investment, certainly in the football side, as relates to equipment and so forth. And look, the council, this council in particular, you are our friends. We look to you as our friends. And look, you have concerns, you have constituencies, you have, uh, there can be differing views on this, but we are asking you to come home. We spent a year in the desert. It was a very, very difficult year, nothing that, some of it are making, some of it's just happenstance. We've always had, uh, felt, and I, and I want to say this publicly, that the council has had our best intentions, and this council didn't even pass that, that ordinance that I'm talking about. But we, you know, this is not, um, this is not a moment where I'm pointing and saying, how dare you, or, or that there's bad feelings, not, 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 not sort at all. The council has actually been very supportive of these sports programs, uh, up to including the referendum that I think passed last, last year, which benefits the whole town. That's not just sports, but that's, that's why I'm here today. So I'm asking you on behalf of those programs, please, please reconsider, even if it is a short period of relief until this thing can get figured out. We are not saying, and I'm not saying that, like I said at the beginning, we don't all have to make sacrifices and tough choices and be participants in the solutions, and I promise you we will. We have a new board at some of the, this football program had a great board, they were toiling with a lot of difficult issues. We've lost a lot of good people that graduated out, or it was just too much. We've got an influx of new, of new people that are involved that really want to help. We will come up with solutions, we will help to be part of the solution and not just part of the problem. We would ask that the council sincerely consider some relief for our kids in our town, our taxpayers in our town, but really kids, none of the taxpayers aren't really care about how much they're paying. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else from the public want to be heard? Going, going?
I would like to say. Keith Dagan, I don't live in Virginsville, my children go to school here, and I coach with Mike in football and lacrosse. And this issue, I'm just coming to light, Mike, has been great in bringing it to light to most of our coaches and parents and, and even the kids. It's very odd to me, growing up and coaching and playing youth sports in, in New Jersey, why is, I hope that you will reconsider the fees, but for me, as a parent, as a coach, I've heard the questions this year, you know, everybody was excited about the building of the new facility at Bedwell, all the kids were, right? I mean, I just know what I hear from my children, what I hear from the kids that I coach. And the question, when put to us by the, by the kids, why can't we play on that field? Number one, I didn't have an answer. I mean, thanks to Mike's efforts, we actually had to be able, were able to form an answer, but not having an answer to give to the kids, which I thought was the reason why we built the field in the first place, right? And it's just, it's very seen, it just seems very confusing to me. I'm just getting involved with this. Once again, not living in town, my children participate in athletics and go to school in this town. I would like to, you know, support Mike and, and his efforts in, in getting you to reconsider it because ultimately, we have to, again, just coming spring from lacrosse and next fall in football, explain to our children, why can't we use that field? You know, it just, because the fees are too high, just seems an answer that, that the kids can't understand. So I just ask for reconsideration for the kids to use that field.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard?
Hi, my friend at 125 Stonefence Ridge. Oh, I'm not nearly as informed as Mike Long, but how much did we say we raised last year with the fees?
It was, actually, it was $8,462.50.
Eighty-five hundred-ish?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, I mean, I'm educating, our entire, like, tax revenue for the town is at 40, 50 million, is that about ballpark?
No.
Like, way off?
Ralph.
The tax revenue.
The tax, what our budget is 13 million municipal portion.
Just what's that, that's about a school force.
Right. The entire money that belongs to with the taxes with the school and the county, everything is important.
We get like 12 or 13 of it.
Uh, I think, two, two things just to be, just so that people get facts and information. The 8,500 we said is, is representative of what we collected this year, but it's not representative of what might be collected at some point because there.
Raise that number?
Well, there were scheduling issues that, that prevented us from, from renting it while we were waiting for the football team to make a decision. So that's one thing. Secondly, that doesn't represent the cost of replacing the field. The annualized cost, which we're projecting into the future, would be more like $30,000 to $50,000 a year. So there's, there's an expense which we need to cover, either through tax revenue or through some fees or a portion of both. So the 8,500 isn't really a number that we're, that we're specifically talking about here.
Is the 8,500, um, is that money being, or whatever money you do raise, raise 25, 30 one day, is that money being saved in a segregated account?
Yes.
Ralph, that's in escrow account? The concept is to not hit taxpayers 10 or 15 years down the road with a half a million dollar bill. So we're trying to plan ahead, we're trying to use, be fiscally responsible in a way that makes it so that taxpayers don't have a big ticket item in the future.
Same as like a fire truck or anything else.
Yeah, so we're just trying to plan.
Okay, understand. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Brian?
How are you? Brian Gallagher, 51 Wood Road. Some of the things I'm trying to understand is, when this all came about and we were putting in this field, it was an understanding that we were going to be giving these, this money to replace the field. Has anybody gone back to the county and saying if they're going to be able to give money or grant money towards that replacement further in the future?
I actually posed that question, I haven't gotten an answer yet from the county, but yeah, I think Jack and I talked about that, about whether.
Now, as far as usage fees, is, can we set our own usage fees or does the county control that?
They, they have to approve. We, we set them subject to their county's approval.
So do you see if we make them lower or nothing, that's an issue with the county?
The county, the county is more concerned with, you know, having disparate fees for
Okay, so they just want to make sure everything's on par, you're in parity with them. You know, the other thing. When you say disparate groups, can you be more clear? I'm not sure what you mean by that.
They, they don't want us discriminating against other groups from the county. We, we can give preference to borough groups for the use of the field, but they don't want us charging.
So is there an issue if we make it a, a zero fee for, for, for borough taxpayers and then if somebody from the county wants to use it, they have to pay, the published rate right now, I think, is $80 an hour?
I think that's the kind of thing the county would not.
The county you don't think would, would approve that?
I don't think so.
But we don't know because we haven't asked.
That's, that's right.
But we control our calendar too, right?
That's correct.
So we have first use, so in other words, if we fill up and jam up the time slot, it's not that we just do that.
That's correct.
But it's not like they could just hop in and, you know, take control of it.
Take you on.
But the key is before we can vote to approve a change in the fees, we have to run those fees past the county to get their feedback.
Absolutely.
We don't know whether they would say yes, no, thumbs up, thumbs down, that's, I'm not saying that, I don't know what their answer would be. But it's a step in the process.
So specifically, we talked, FC, I know FC Burner, they used some field time last year, right? If it was a situation where local recreation departments did not pay and outside organizations like an FC Burner, that type of an organization had a field fee, are you saying that that is not permissible at the county level? If I, am I understanding that correctly, Jack?
I'm saying we have to run it by the county, depending, I mean, if it were like a commercial adult group, we could charge higher prices. If it's another youth group in the county, I would say probably not, but we, we don't have much experience with it.
Could, I mean, is there a precedent? Could you get, could we get definitions on what that means? That, that very much informs a choice for me in this.
If you're debating intentionally so, you know, it makes it very clear that we set the schedule for groups and we set the fees subject to their consent. I, I can call Bill Cooper as county council.
How do we waive fees the first year? They were waived the first year, how do we manage to do that?
We didn't have.
They were waived for everybody.
Waived it for everybody?
Well, I, I don't think they have a problem waiving the fees, which we did.
So all this being said, though, like, one of the things that kind of gets to me is, no, I get it, we're talking at like a town level and not a BOE level, but I think we've got to think more globally and more as a town. And I'm not saying that you guys don't, but as far as, we're looking at these hurting programs that are obviously feeding the programs within the high school. So if we're looking at, as a parent, you know, if my kids want to play football, not that I'm jamming it down their throats, but if, I want there to be a program there for them. And if we don't have the money to fund a program where, you know, these fees and whatever hit into that, and we have our kids going to either other towns or just a program going away completely, you know, you know, that hurts, that, that's troublesome because these are all of our kids. And that's how we got to think, we got to think more globally about that. You know, I'm on the baseball board, I'm on the football board, I'm heavily involved in this stuff and I really care about it. So I really hope you guys take a, you know, a deep look into this. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. One of the things, if we, if there, if we want to change the fees and say that there'll be no fee for Burnersville, whatever groups with 80% Burnersville residents, the process would be, um, because it's an ordinance. So we would introduce the ordinance at one meeting and then we'd have an open public hearing and a vote at the next meeting after we got county approval. So that's kind of what the process would be if we wanted to do this.
I mean, my personal opinion, I think while we figure, I think we have things we have to figure out as a town. And I don't think we should make it harder in our youth sports organizations until we figure those things out. It may turn out that we have to impose some kind of fees, but I, I believe that we need to, number one, what exactly is going to be the replacement cost? Is the county going to contribute yes or no? Do we have the ability to charge outside the organizations or does everybody have to charge? I mean, there's some questions that I have in my mind.
I think there's three, there's three tiers, I, just to be clear so everybody is on the same page, there's three tiers right now that, that are set up. There's 80% or greater Burnersville residents, that's one tier, that, the lowest tier. The next tier up is the county, you know, people who live in this state of New Jersey, is it?
It's nonprofit organizations.
Nonprofits in, from, yes, nonprofit, that have fewer than 80%. But they're nonprofit teams, I think that's where FC Burner fell in that category. That's the tier two, slightly higher, I think was $80.
$80.
An hour. And then it's either $100 or $200 an hour for a for-profit team. So the, I think the county's greatest interest is in that tier two, which would be people from the county, like FC Burner or whatever, because the county's saying, well, we paid for part of that field, so we want our people to, you know, to be, you know, represented, I guess, in this fee structure, you know?
I have an email from the county, from county council from November 24th, 2017. The main focus of the review is to ensure, one, access to facility by general public is it being reasonably handled, and two, any fees charged aren't exorbitant. So those are the main two concerns.
I mean, that, this is my, look, I, I'm, I'm a baseball guy, I'm not a football or lacrosse guy. Baseball kids, they don't go to the turf field.
There is a baseball field there.
No, I know, but we don't, there's a lot of reasons why we don't use it, um, that I don't want to get into. It kills me every time I drive through Bedwell and I see our million dollar field empty. And it is empty far more than it's ever filled. So it's zero dollars of zero dollars is still zero. So if our local organizations aren't using it because the fees don't mesh with what, I mean, if the field's empty and we have kids practicing in different places while the field's empty, that to me is a problem.
I have a question. What constitutes access by the general public? What's required by that?
I think we can't limit it to use to Burnersville residents, as they said, we control the calendar, but we can't have a, a cross-the-board prohibition against others using it.
How many times has somebody else in the county come to use the field or request use of the field?
I don't know that they.
Well, we could have, we, I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, we could have filled it last year with FC Burner. The problem was is that we held them off too long while we were waiting for Burnersville teams to make a decision, and then when we came back to them and said, you can have it, they had made other plans. But they were willing to take whatever was not used.
Yeah, that's my understanding, although I, I don't know if a 100% filled or largely filled is a, I don't know.
But to the point that it was empty, I mean, it, it, it could have been, we could have significantly revenue from them, you know, but things didn't work out.
That, that was a discussion.
Jack, I have a question. So if we don't have anybody scheduled on that turf, the general public can go and, you know, have a pickup game if they wanted to.
Right. Subject to reasonable rules.
Right, following the standard rules, or you could just go and run around on that field if it's not, if it's scheduled, you can't do that.
Correct.
Okay. So that allows for the general public and kind of, if you want to say.
As they say, it's intentionally dating the agreement and that's the guidance they're got.
Yeah, but it sounds like they wouldn't have a problem.
We don't want to make too much noise about it because we want the county to come.
But they wouldn't have a problem with no fees, they'd more have a problem with exorbitant fees.
I, I don't think that our taxpayer payer should be stuck with a bill of half a million dollars in 10 years. I agree with you. I think there needs to be a more global approach to this that helps to pay for the field replacement. I don't think, Jeff, in my personal opinion, that the solution is to have folks from other towns come use our really nice field and not let our own kids use it.
Well, that's, that's, that in ordinance, that's not possible because our kids.
Why on this town?
Right of refusal, you know, and it was only offered to the other people afterwards. Okay, let's be fair.
So there's, there's no, there's no chance that, that another outside organization with less than 80% Burnersville kids would get a chance to, to schedule that field unless our teams don't want it?
I know.
Yeah.
And they chose, and they chose not to want it.
I think we're conflating two questions. One, the global approach is necessary, it'll be dealt with through the, you know, the RFP. But two, just, that won't help the fall leagues, you know, because that won't, that'll take 10 months to go to conclusion. So we've got to deal with this year and then the global approach in subsequent years, I think.
But I think the, the issue, the big issue was replacing that field. That was the reason behind it. And if we now have $400,000 a year of open space money and, you know, we can put the 25% aside every year.
Yes, I mean, it's still taxpayer dollars though, I mean.
It is, but it, we're, it's, it's not a new tax, which is part of what we use when we were.
It's just that that money wouldn't be available for anything else then, for that.
Right, but, but we're not, again, I mean, to Mike's point, right? I mean, we need, we have capital investments, right? We need to set money aside for capital investments like roads. We borrowed $10 million in the last, I don't know, it was 2015 or something, for roads, right? We're just finishing up that bond now. So we, we have to have assets for the community and we don't necessarily need to charge specific sports teams for that. Like, I mean, you know, you, you go and you park a fee, I mean, like, we're going to have to maintain the park, we're going to have to maintain the roads. We need to figure out how to be fiscally responsible in setting money aside so that we can make the investments that we need to make. The pool is another example. We have to invest in the pool and we have no money to do that either. So we need to figure out a better way to have money for capital investments.
The pool charges a fee as well, right?
Does it cover that operation?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't cover it. I mean.
No, it, but I think the pool, the pool gets open space, the pool gets some open space dollars and the pool charges a fee also.
They do. And when, when the pool was new and it was in, it was, it made money and it sustained itself, but because it hasn't been kept up, we've lost a lot of fees and people that are coming in, so it doesn't sustain itself anymore.
So I, if I can kind of stop this conversation right now, I think what the next step would be is to check with the county and first of all, and see if that's possible at all in and first of all, and see if that's possible at all in the first place, that they'll be okay if we, if that was an option. Then I think next meeting.
Plus if they'll participate in the replacement.
Right, and whether or not they.
That's a second question.
We could get a second grant or not.
I'll ask, but I don't think they commit to something eight years ago.
Can, can we ask if they've done it for anybody else, like, for example, if there's a precedent that we could use?
And, you know, we get very little from the county, so, you know, it may be something that in ten, fifteen years, it might be our turn again. You know, you get some capital projects. So let's get answers to those two questions. If we get them before the next meeting, we could introduce the ordinance and open the discussion and see where we go from there.
May I add?
Yeah, we're still in open session.
Jack, one, one place to look, at least for an example, if you're not getting clear answers, is Randolph. Has turf field, they don't charge for local sports teams. It's recently been installed as part of the global plan.
Right.
And they don't charge for local teams, they do charge for outside teams, I don't know if they got county money.
That's more county.
It's more county.
Would the rules be different?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, every county.
They're probably the same, but they can be different. But I, I have a pretty good relationship with county council.
There probably are other.
But we should.
I think there are other examples in some of those counties, but I looked at this.
What about Baskin?
In the past, there are towns that structure it that way, locals don't pay fees, outsiders do.
Yeah, Baskin Ridge.
Baskin Ridge has fees, they got fees to pay their bond back.
To build the field?
Yeah, because they built it themselves, they didn't get county money.
And there's three time door service.
Yeah.
So does that sound like a plan?
So, so Baskin Ridge charges a fee, which is not even for replacement, it's actual for the construction cost of the field?
Yeah, it was to pay that back.
And did the fee go away when they paid it back? Or they're still doing it maybe?
I think they're still, they're still paying.
But again, they're like twenty thousand people.
Yeah, they're, they're.
Maybe seven.
Yeah, about.
Almost eight, I think, you know, anyway, so, okay.
Seventy-nine hundred.
Are we good with that plan? Yes?
The other thing, guys, is like, if you're looking at everything, like, I, I understand there's a lot of people that have an issue in town with, you know, bolstering our athletic fields or parks or whatever, but we're all complaining about, you know, our home prices dropping. All, all this stuff brings young families to town, all these things. We have all these facilities in town, but everybody comes to, it makes it an attractive thing. You know, they come down to our ballparks, they see, wow, a great field, they're coming from other towns, you know, and all these different programs we've got going on. In the future, we make the polo grounds a park, you know, we have walking paths, you know, we have places where people can rent out and pavilions and stuff like that, and have, you know, family parties. I mean, this is the stuff that attracts people to town. I get it, train lines are big, a nice center town, but we could have that, we kind of do. But we got to look at it really as a whole and what's going to bring more people here.
Sounds like strategic visiting to me.
Yes, it does.
Welcome to the committee.
Does anybody else want to be heard from the public? We're good? All right, I will close the public session. Thank you all for taking the time to come down. We are now up to ordinances, so I think this first one is we need a public hearing on appropriating thirty-eight thousand from the sewer utility capital fund for Dayton Crescent sewer repairs. Do I, anyone from the public wish, oh, wish to be heard on the sewer ordinance? I'll close the public session, Christine, you want to move that?
I move to pass ordinance twenty nineteen dash eighteen thirty on final reading and adopt as published.
Hold on a second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Donnie?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. Rode?
Yes.
Okay, I will now open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty eighteen thirty-one, which is an ordinance rezoning lots twenty-one and twenty-two in block one eleven, lots eleven and eleven point oh one in block one twelve, lots thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen in block one thirteen. Did I already say that? I think I skipped a line. There's so many dots here, and lots one oh one, fifteen, fifteen oh one, and sixteen in block one fourteen from R four to R five, in amending Article twelve entitled zoning of the borough land development code. Would anyone from the public like to be heard on that? And I will close the public session, Chad, you want to move that?
I'll move this, I was on the planning board when this was reviewed, by the planning board.
We're just continuing this, right?
Yes, because we added lots.
Oh, right, we're only continuing, that's right.
We're continuing it?
Yes, because we added, we added some.
So can I just be clear, we didn't add any lots, it was that the original ordinance didn't include the ones that the planning board had intended to be included in the first place.
That's correct, because he didn't list the lot numbers, he had a map, and when I did it, I sent it to John Zabel to review and he had the flu, which I didn't.
Because the one I saw on the agenda today looks like the one that was reviewed in the planning board meetings. The one that's from today's agenda, it looks correct.
Correct.
Yes, this has been corrected, so we are.
So we're moving just to modify it and then continue this to the next meeting?
That's correct.
Yeah, so you can read this, this could be amended?
Yeah, I got it, thank you. I move that ordinance twenty twenty dash eighteen thirty-one be amended in a response to a request from the planning board to add additional lots to those being rezoned from R four to R five and that the notice of amendment be published according to law and a public hearing on the ordinance as amended be continued to the meeting beginning at seven PM on Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty.
Hold on a second.
Roll call, please.
I have a quick just question. There was a very nice letter from the planning board in support of this, but is there any downside to this? Did the planning board discuss that there was any negatives to doing this?
So the planning board spent about two meetings, not two full meetings, but there were two separate meetings where we looked at this. And there was discussions about the logic about where the line was, it was bisecting three lots out of, I think, ten that are affected. They felt that good planning practice would be that you don't bisect lots. Secondly, there was, I think, an opinion in the past about, you know, where's the best place to put a lot line, the, sorry, the zone line and the, the middle of the road is used in, in many instances, but not this particular instance. So based on the information that we saw, it looked like a more consistent approach. The planning board was generally in agreement, I think it passed unanimously at the planning board after discussion, and there were discussions about could we move it just for this lot or just for that lot, but again, the, the approach that, that the planning board is recommending is the one that got the most support and unanimous support for the planning board, so.
And they covered that in the letter, but I'm just being mindful of what happened with the transfer station, so I want to, I want to question, I don't want to be one who says, oh, they said it was okay, so it's okay.
Understood.
Was there, is, what I'm hearing.
So I think if there was a potential downside, it would be that there's a house, and when you're on the left-hand side of the street or right-hand side of the street, you know, should, should the zones be different across the street? That's a common practice in much of our zone lines across the borough, that this side of the road, right side of the road is one zone, and left side of the road is the other zone. But then there's the, the idea, well, should the houses that front that road be in the more, you know, one, one zone versus the other? So there's two different approaches, the more common approach, and Terry may, may have some comments as well, she's on the planning board. The more common approach is to have it bisect the road. In this case was an instance where it was behind the first row of homes, so they were sort of like on the across-the-street zone while every other house on that adjacent block was in the R five. So if you look at the pictures, it kind of makes my points more clear, but I think, you know, it's a, it's a judgment call, but.
It all makes sense to me.
Somebody could complain, but I think there's enough logic to support why the change was made.
But don't they notify all the neighbors, don't they get a note, do they get a notification?
I think because it was a.
We do, it's part of this. Whenever there's rezoning, all the affected properties.
Right, so they've all, they're all aware.
Received notice of the public hearing.
Of this meeting, or the one that occurred at the planning board?
It'll be at the next meeting.
Right, but I mean, they, they didn't go to the planning board meeting, they were notified to come to this coming up meeting.
No, actually, I think he's going to notify them for the next meeting.
For the next meeting?
Right.
Sorry, but, but they didn't get a letter ahead of the planning board meeting?
No, that's correct.
Okay, that's.
Should they have?
No, no, the requirement is for a rezoning before segmenting the ordinance, they have to get notice, in addition to the newspaper notice. Effective property, it's all, also have to get notice.
So I just pause for a second, Terry, did you want to add anything from the planning board discussions?
There was one obvious benefit, and that there was one oversized lot that was, that, that is now in the, in the smaller zone, in the, in the smaller zone lots. And it means that their application is a, is a normal, it means it comes to the planning board instead of the.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of the benefits, I just want to know what the negatives might have been, if there were any, that were discounted, and it sounds like there were very few or many.
Few, I think that, that, you know, you could argue if you're on this, you're on the right-hand side of the street and then somebody on the left-hand side of the street, their zone is somewhat less restricted than it was previously, you could say, oh, well, that person, you know, I want the zoning same as that person, but that's not, you know, it's possible that somebody could say that.
Yeah, but when we looked, we looked at the lot sizes on both sides and then, and this, this, there, there were only two that were oversized for their present lot sizing, you know, and then those, those are really the two that are affecting my notes.
Okay.
You can do a voice vote, Ms.
A voice vote, because we're just amending.
Yes.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I will open the public hearing now on ordinance twenty twenty eighteen thirty-two, an ordinance increasing the number of members on the Borough Board of Health from five to seven, and amending Chapter two of the Borough Code entitled administration. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, Gina, you want to move that?
I move to pass ordinance twenty nineteen dash eighteen thirty-two on final reading and adopt as published.
Hold on a second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Mara?
Yes.
Mr. Rode?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McQueeney?
Yes.
Mr. Donnie?
Yes.
Okay, I will now open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty eighteen thirty-three, setting twenty twenty salaries and hourly rates for non-contractual employees. Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this? Okay, I will close the public hearing. We changed personnel, your personnel now, yes, go ahead.
I moved to pass ordinance twenty nineteen eighteen thirty-three on final reading and to adopt as published.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Donnie?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. Rode?
Yes.
Ms. Mara?
Okay, we now have resolutions twenty twenty-nine to twenty forty-four. Any that are out for discussion or want to take off the consent agenda?
I just had a question about twenty thirty-one and twenty thirty-five.
Okay.
So on twenty thirty-one, the election day was, was a holiday, was that, was the intent of that so that people had time to go vote?
It's been a holiday, it's on our list of holidays in our employee handbook. Every year we have traded it for the day of Thanksgiving, just because, I mean, we're, we're open because of voting, but just in general.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not opposed to the change, but I want to understand, because it's not a federal holiday, so it was always a holiday for, what, what was the plan? Was it to facilitate voting and if, and, and since we're now making that a full workday, are we making provisions for people to be able to vote?
It was before any, any one of us.
Well, you've got early morning to late night for voting, but why don't we just change the personnel handbook and make the day after Thanksgiving a holiday and leave off.
Which would make sense.
Yeah, so we don't do this every year?
Rather than every year changing.
Yeah, because every, every year we do two.
I know, I know.
We could do that, yeah.
Okay, and they, and on twenty thirty-five, about setting the pool fees, and actually, I was going to ask this before it came up in discussion here, but to follow up, are those pool fees, which to some people may, may, may seem high, but were they set, did the direct committee really think about what would maximize the ability to get people to join the pool? Do you make up for, if lower fees, you get more people, or higher fees, you make up for the, the, the loss of, of people joining?
What's the tipping point?
What process did they go, huh, sorry?
What's the tipping point?
Yeah.
Price elasticity?
How, how was this debated? Are we in the optimal place for fees, is what I'm asking, I really am ignorant of all this.
I mean, I, I've only said on one meeting.
Is, is this an increase?
This is an increase, and it's, it's mainly due to the minimum wage increase.
What's the percentage increase?
I'm not sure, it went from nine, nine dollars and sixty-five cents to ten dollars and thirty cents.
No, I'm sorry, what's the, what's the fees to, that we're charging to residents, like, do we raise it five percent or three percent?
I think they added twenty dollars, so it went from three seventy-five to three ninety-five or something.
I mean, I'm not convinced that the fee structure's.
No, that the, it definitely, the, the rec, rec used to be a utility, like the sewer.
Right.
It used to pay for itself, and then two years ago, they changed that, and so now rec is essentially a cost.
Did we change it two years ago, or it was much longer?
I think it was three.
Three years ago?
Exactly, I believe.
But before that, we were making, the borough was making up the difference for a number of years, weren't we?
Yes.
Before we made that decision.
Before it became a utility, it was part of the municipal budget, as it is now. So it was in, then it was out.
Then it's back in? And, but it's, it's more than just recently that there's been a negative, where the, where the fees were not covering the costs.
Yeah, there's been a shortfall.
For how many years?
At least, I think it was three before we changed it.
So it's six years, so got six years, maybe?
Well, pool, pools are closing across the state.
I was going to say.
Pool membership is going down across the state, and my concern is, the fee here for the family membership, a regular family membership is four hundred ninety-five dollars, so early registration is four twenty-five. So the question is, are, are we hurting ourselves, making it even fewer people willing to join, and then we're just exacerbating the problem? Would it be better to keep the fee low and maybe we absorb somewhat, a little bit more loss, or maybe we attract more people? I, I don't know what the discussions were, I don't, were you, were you?
I was not, but I think it sounds like this.
But he was on last year.
Yeah, this echoes right now to me, this conversation echoes the turkey question, right now we got this in front of us, and like, you've pointed, you know, what, what the pricing should be, what should be offered. That's something, you know, I think the next ten months we'll figure out, but, you know, there'd be more lifeguards and they're mandated to cost more because of the minimum wage law, so we're just trying to.
Have we surveyed?
Become a user fee.
Has the rec committee surveyed families that were members and then declined to renew their membership to find out why?
No, they, the, somebody did bring up that they should do surveys, and it was suggested, but the rec department does not do them today.
Because it would be worthwhile finding out whether people didn't join because of the cost, or they didn't join because their kids graduated, don't, don't use the pool, or.
And many are using Baskin Ridge pools as well.
I think there's a bigger question, too, you know, is a lump sum fee structure the right fee structure, or is it a pay-per-use structure that would make sense as well or not?
I think there was a concern that revenue would drop in a pay-per-use model.
No one would take a membership.
Additional administration.
I think that, you know, I, I, I want to be cautious here, we got a group that advocate very strongly for reducing fees, you know, for one set of constituents, and now we have another plan to raise fees, maybe five percent or something in that order. Five percent is twenty dollars on three seventy-five, is five point three percent. So I don't know, you know, exactly, because there are a lot of different fees. So did they all go up across the board, and did they go up by a fixed percentage, or did they all go up by twenty dollars, like?
Yeah, they, they all went up by, I think, I can't remember exactly, I think the, the pool fee went up by fifteen, and I think that the camp, the recreation camp went up twenty, and it went up across the board, so for residents and non-residents.
Now, the camps are the, are pool camps or just like other activity camps?
It's a recreation camp, it's a summer camp for kids.
And the wages that we're talking about, I know, John, you referred to the lifeguards or something, right? We increased the number of lifeguards, increased the pay for lifeguards.
And they're all graduating after, you know.
Well, there's minimum wage.
But the raise in the minimum wage affects all the programs, not just the lifeguards, is that right?
Right, yeah, that's why they raised the camp and the pool, because it was the lifeguards and then the counselors as well.
Is there, or is it unreasonable to ask for, you know, if you've got the six-week summer camp and now we're raising the fee, do you, do we get a profit and loss on the program, like, how many kids registered at this fee, what the expenses were, so we know that the they're making money, they're losing money?
I believe there was.
I believe that the treasurer of the rec committee provides that documentation. I don't know if it's on a month, I don't think it's on a monthly basis, I think it may be on a year.
Is that something you get?
Yes, it's monthly.
Oh, it is monthly?
Oh, you, so you get that monthly to see which programs are doing well and which ones aren't?
Yes, we can have a complete summary of all the county.
But I only see, but I only see the summary, like, I, I only went to my first rec meeting last week, but this is just the summary, but what the mayor's asking for is like, for basketball, for example, how much was brought in and what was spent?
And Neil has had those breakdowns, and we, we want them, we ask for them, and Neil typically provides them.
I think there's a philosophical question in the summer, Tom, but I think you're, you're sort of going to, it's a philosophical question. What are we supplementing and what are we not?
Yeah, I mean, we just, we should treat everybody equitably, I think.
I agree. And, and I, and I, there's also another philosophical question, is should, you know, is the rec, is the rec department a cost-neutral entity? Is it a cost center? Or is it supposed to be a for-profit entity?
Well, not every aspect of rec is cost negative, right? There are programs that, that, that actually pay for themselves, right?
We'd have to look at.
But the pool do.
I don't know, we have to look at that, that's.
Right, it's just not an across-the-board statement, we, we should get it, I think, the statement about which programs are cost-neutral and which ones, you know?
That would be great.
Because if we already have a cost-neutral program, yes, exactly.
But the only ones that lose money is the pool, the other ones are at least cost-neutral.
I, I'm not sure.
I don't know, well, as of last year, I, I might have shared all about this.
Okay.
That's what she said as of last year, I was put that way.
The other, the other thing I think, and you touched on this, Jeff, is that while obviously enhancing or improving or modifying or, or growing, revitalizing our pool would potentially drive additional revenue, hopefully it would, it would offset the additional expense to, to do those enhancements. I think that there's, there's a global trend across communities where pool membership's gone down. You know, that, that's also underlying some of the reasons that we're seeing the, the struggles with the, with the pool financials over six years. It's not just an issue related to what amenities do we have and, you know.
So, so let me ask you this then, and it's really unfair, you just, you just got on the committee, but.
But I was here.
When, when is the, when is the date that they need to publish their brochure with the prices? Because if we have some time, I would say, send us back to the rec committee to really, you know, come back with the, you know, maybe some more defense of the, the, the fees or at least a plan, or at least a, you know, are we just reactively adding twenty dollars every year to the, to the registration?
Yeah, I mean, this, all I know is that this particular increase was related to, they were assuming a forty thousand dollar net increase to their expenses because of the minimum wage, period. This is, that's the only reason for this, and they actually, in fact, they started out at a much higher number, and a lot of the people were challenging why such an increase when you're really just trying to. and a lot of the people were challenging why such an increase when you're really just trying to cover the additional, the difference, so everybody literally had their calculators out, we had a two-hour meeting because of it. Everybody's trying to figure out what's the difference in cents multiplied by how many we have, et cetera. And the hours that they're open, yeah. Yeah, we needed Tom, I I really, I was like, somebody didn't do this before this meeting? But, yeah, we spent a lot of time going back and forth, and the number went down by half, actually, from what they originally proposed.
My understanding, at least as of last year, was that because some, uh, changes in Baskin Ridge, and I think Chester amended, somebody else opened the pool, we 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 lost a lot of out-of-town residents, out-of-town members. Will increasing the fee on, you know, essentially kill that so that we get none?
The out-of-town members, so I think it was something like two hundred and forty-one out of the two forty-eight that were members of the pool paid for the early bird registration, and there were only like thirty in total out-of-town members of the pool.
Yeah, but I think Jeff's point is that our in-town people are going and being out-of-town rep
Yes, yes, they're paying out, yes.
At other pools, so they want a pool, but they don't want our pool, or or, and is that because of the fees? That's, I think, the question.
That's actually, that's actually.
I don't think it's because of the fees, because they pay exorbitant amounts.
The incremental increase that we were discussing that we pared down would not affect that. That wouldn't adversely affect people going to Pleasant Valley or to Baskin Ridge, well, um, um, in that case, that the the increase was so small that it would not affect that, and also looking historically, you know, over the the increases that we've done in the past, it hadn't affected, you know, adversely in those cases, so that that was the discussion.
That that wasn't the question, though, but thank you, I mean, that that's an important point, but the question was we have a two hundred dollar differential between residents and non-residents. We we're losing consistently, and probably faster than we're losing residents, we're losing non-residents as members of the pool. Is that because the fees are too high and they're going to other pools rather than ours, and would we would we be better served not jacking up the fee on the non-residents to try to capture them?
Yeah, and that's what I just thought, there was only thirty last year, so, and it is high, it's like almost seven hundred dollars, I think.
Six ninety. Oh, six ninety-five for a family.
Right, it was only thirty, but that's the point, maybe that could be forty or fifty or sixty.
Maybe, but yeah, they choose to pay Pleasant Valley instead of.
Where they're going to stay, I guess that's the question.
Last June, um, I asked Doug about the same thing because this came up and we really didn't have time to change it, because like you said, we're under the gun to publish a brochure and get this out, so um, I went to a rec committee meeting in June and, um, gave some other options that the rec committee could discuss or explore, but didn't hear anything after that, but just to kind of give you an idea, um, I just pulled up my list of, you know, pools in the area and what other kinds of structures they use, and one of them was in Warren where they have, um, evening-only memberships, so it's a little bit of a lower price, and it's for residents only, you pay the lower price and you only go from five to ten.
They did, they did talk about different things, they talked about, you know, the nanny
The babysitter.
One, the weekend one, the after-August one, and they essentially just said that it was from an administrative perspective, keeping track of it, and, you know, how do they really keep people out when, you know, you gotta kind of have the list when people are coming in, so they just thought it was too much administrative work.
That's logistics, but if it, you know, that, to me, is not a good excuse not to do it, and
And the reason I brought it up.
Increase membership.
Right, the reason I brought it up
Yeah, definitely would.
Was mainly to address concerns of residents, it wasn't, you know, any other revenue reason, it was just residents.
I don't know why they need the brochure printed quite so soon, I mean, they probably don't need it until March or April.
Yeah, I think they gave until January thirty-first, I think the deadline is the thirty-first for the vendors to respond to say what camps they want and when, the weeks that they want them. That was the deadline that Neil had stated for the vendors, so they won't do anything until.
So, does that mean we have more time or we don't have more time?
Well, I mean, if they, if they, they meet the second Tuesday of every month, so.
Sorry, the the vendors need the prices, or the vendors?
The, we need the prices and the weeks from the vendors, and so then they make the schedule, so I would, I would say that we probably could do it, but Al, what do you think?
Uh, the schedule is pretty aggressive because of those vendors and and some other factors, so, uh, I think we'd have to maybe put a special meeting on the calendar to to address this and not worry about our Tuesday meeting and and try to resolve this.
I would like to see that, uh, you know, just, I don't think we've thought this really through.
Well, I'd like to go back to the equity question, which is, we're raising fees on one group and we're asking to reduce or eliminate fees on another group.
Not to mention the swim team, you have families that are paying to be on the swim team and to join the pool, so they get hit twice, and many, many swim team members have come to me with that and probably to you guys. It's like a double whammy for them.
Am I allowed to ask Al a question? Is it possible? Can I be allowed to talk, ask him directly or no, Mayor?
Do you want a question now?
No, I have a question. And this gets to a little bit about what I'm realizing, look, I have to decide based on, on less perfect information than I typically would like to make a decision, and you have to rely on each one of us that we're coming with an answer that's sufficient, now, I, Gina, attending one meeting, I I think there are things that I want to know, so I mean, Al, from your perspective, is this fee structure the right structure to make the pool successful, and that that for me is the metric. The pool becoming successful, a place where people want to go, congregate, hang out, are we maximizing its opportunity? Have we maximized the value of the pool for our residents?
Successfully subjective. What's your definition of successful?
Um, I don't, I don't know.
Like sustaining itself from a money perspective?
It's financial, it's, look, we all want the Polo Grounds to be a place where our town congregates in some way. Our people, I mean, I'm I'm finding that, you know, a decrease in membership is not success. So you want to see a membership that's increasing, more people hanging, more people participating and being there for not only swimming functions but other functions. So have we maximized those things and the revenue from them versus just, again, similar to lacrosse thing, requiring on a smaller and smaller number of people to pay a bigger and bigger bill? So, Al, let's see what he has to say.
A little pressure.
I I think this was, the the fee structure increase was in direct, you know, it was a knee-jerk reaction to okay, our lifeguard fees are going up, we have to cover it somehow, okay?
Sorry, lifeguard and all other, I'm sorry, not just lifeguard, lifeguard and all other vendors of the fees for everybody, like, we're we're paying, it's not just lifeguards, right?
For the pool, for the pool, I mean, yeah, it's really only lifeguards, I I don't think that there's.
Vendors are like outside contractors, aren't they?
Yeah, but the, but for the camp, but these are pool and camp increases, and the camp increases are for the counselors.
Yes.
Need a better one?
I think you guys could do a better summary of exactly what we discussed in our, I'm proposing here.
Yeah.
But to answer your question, um, again, I think it was a knee-jerk reaction to try to make up for that money that we were going to be losing this year, and also to make the pool attractive by keeping the costs affordable for families. So we went through everything, we went through the, you know, the babysitter fees and this and that, and we decided not to touch some of that and maybe adjust some of this, uh, again, these discussions going, you know, around the table, you know, more than a dozen times, right, John? It was, and then everybody's on their calculators, okay, this is six percent, let's cut that in half to three percent. A lot of numbers being thrown out there, but at the end of the, at the end of the day, we need to get this in front of you, because Cheryl has the schedule to keep and, um, and get this approved, so.
But it wasn't very well-prepared, I will say, it was not well-prepared. Like the the structure.
Strategic plans about this, you know, and we'll, we're not thinking outside the box, to use a bad cliche, we we're doing the same thing we've done every year before, and so we're gonna get the same result, which is declining usage, you know, declining pool.
Agreed.
Well, I think we should look at that too, because the, uh, the usage, it has been up and down over the last few years, there was a couple of years where it actually went up, um, recently, um, fifteen, sixteen, right?
Well, and historically, I think if you have a bad summer, a rainy, horrible summer, enrollment is down the next year, you have a really hot, good summer, it's up the next year, I mean, it does fluctuate, we've seen that over the years.
So I think I think you should be able to see that, though, uh, you know, I think that's important for all of you to to be able to, you know, digest that data.
So our next meeting is February tenth, would would it be terrible to, would we put it off and get a report about this on February tenth?
I could ask our colleagues, absolutely.
When is your next meeting?
I think it's the day after that, the eleventh, yeah.
And I would add, look, I want to know, I want to understand what, why, what the the delta is. So what is actually the red that we're gonna incur in the budget by not, by doing nothing? I want to know what else we're doing to raise revenue with the pool, I think there's a lot of opportunities that we may not be.
There were a lot of ideas discussed to try to raise revenue at the pool, but.
Nobody can agree.
Yeah.
Talking about combining tennis programs with the pool, basketball programs with the pool, kind of think outside the box, as as you guys had said, that maybe there's some opportunities to get, you know, smaller groups involved with the pool, and kind of piggyback on on each to, you know, to, um, obviously make the experience at the pool more attractive.
Yeah, and you won't know exactly what you're gonna be negative either, I mean, because then you can't predict.
You know how many hours you have at the pool?
Yeah, but you can't predict registration, so.
Right, and there are different employees are at different levels too, so, and you don't know who you're gonna hire.
But but the math of the minimum wage and what the, because if the reason was the minimum wage, minimum wage change, how many hours it's going to affect, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's why, she said it was forty thousand, that's what she said, it was.
Minimum wage and the number of lifeguards required also change.
Right, the number of lifeguards.
Ralph, do we have?
Some are already at minimum wage because they've been there a couple of years, I think.
Yeah, so they did the math and said they would be negative forty thousand, that's what they were trying to cover.
At the pool?
Pool and camp.
And camps.
Camp, because they have the counselors.
Counselors, yeah.
So have we, have the vendors told us what they're gonna charge us, and we just pass the cost through, or?
We charge an administrative fee, and we get the convenience fee from the credit cards.
Okay.
Those two things.
That's it?
Yeah. When their vendor run, the vendor runs everything and we just.
So are the, so my question is, are the vendors' prices to us going up?
I don't know, they have, they had to the thirty-first to respond.
So we're setting our fees, we don't even know what it's gonna cost us yet?
We're only setting the fees for camp, for the rec camp that we run and the pool, that's it.
Oh, okay, so not, not the vast majority of the camps, which fees will be set by those vendors, I see. So the camp that we run is which one?
The rec, it's just called the rec camp.
Oh, I see, like, this, yeah, I get it, it's the one that's, that does the, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Nine to twelve.
I know which one.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're setting the fee for that and the, um, and the pool?
Yes.
Sorry, Ralph, I had a question, which was do we in our financials break out revenue and expenses as it relates to the pool, or is it kind of now that it's all combined?
No, no, there are two separate accounts for the pool and for the rec programs.
And then, what I'm saying then, do we also break out the revenue associated with that?
Yes, we do.
This was the, this is the income.
To Chad's point, do we have a a number in the red that we are right now?
For, not for this year.
For two thousand nineteen?
Yeah, so this is what we were.
Yeah, we could go back, yes, we can go back and give that, yes.
You're saying this is the number?
Yeah, I think so, because this is what they, this was the total revenue, this was the total expenses in twenty nineteen. Yes, exactly, yeah, this is the variance between eighteen and nineteen.
It gets to what Jeff was saying.
Not in the red, by the way.
Look, it killed me every time I drove by the turf and the turf was empty, it would kill me again if we're making decisions and the pool becomes empty. We gotta solve these problems, not make them worse. And I'm not sure we have the information.
You know, I suggested they had a senior fee, seniors get to go for free.
Oh, boy.
Hey, I can go, I get it for everyone.
Yeah, it's great.
Jeff, how we fix this?
It sounds like there would be a need for a separate meeting.
We'll have a dedicated meeting to it, probably.
And maybe additional counselors.
But, uh, I don't, we're not gonna solve it for this year, uh, but I do think that we have to do something different, we're, you know, what we're doing is adding ten to twenty dollars every year.
Yes, the definition of insanity.
I don't, is this the forty thousand you're referring to? Because I don't read that that way.
Allow residents to buy like a packet of twenty guest passes
Yes.
Without a membership, but again, it's like you really have to look at the big picture on that, and then wouldn't everybody just do that?
Right, and then it takes away from.
And then you have people that are away for an entire month in the summer, so that's why they don't join, because they're only getting a month out of it, so it's just a lot, there are so many nuances to pool joining, the the, the biggest thing is you want people to enjoy the pool, and the people who enjoy the pool are getting fewer and fewer, they're going to Pleasant Valley and Baskin Ridge.
They also said there was a fun factor.
Do you know, do you know how, what they, what the fees?
I don't know, but it's comparable, so they.
Would they share with us?
The fees in Pleasant Valley and Baskin Ridge?
We should know that.
You can Google it.
For residents.
It's not up to top, Andrew, we did look at that at our last meeting, absolutely.
And what amenities they have.
And was much higher.
We ought to know.
Sorry, which one was much higher now?
Even from a handful of people, why?
Pleasant Valley.
Pleasant Valley.
But we also, we ought to know why people who were members here have chosen to go to be members there. Is it the money, or is it some amenity at the pool that we don't have? We don't have to ask everybody, but I think we'd get a sample.
I know, I know one family that went to the, that went to Baskin Ridge, I can ask them.
I know one family.
So this is all part of the.
Everybody knows, I mean, it's a small town, it's not that hard to.
We were a family that used to belong for years and then this left them.
Yeah, I mean, there, I think, I mean, there's a couple of things too, but there is also.
Part of the master plan. We'd go five or six times a year and it wasn't worth five hundred bucks.
Okay.
But see, now, you would be an incremental revenue source, though, for, if we had a per-day fee.
If I had a day fee.
And I can volunteer, I would be a, I would be an incremental revenue source if there was a per-day fee.
Exactly.
We have family and friends that come in from out of town.
Yeah.
I'm looking for something for the kids to do during the summer, but I can't justify five hundred dollars for the, for the, for the for the number of times that we go there, but I'd be more than happy to pay a per-use fee to big family and friends a couple days a year.
I would too.
The babysitter, you have to pay for the family, plus then you have to pay for a babysitter, I only want my kids to go when I'm at work with my sitters, and I have to pay the four hundred or whatever, plus the sitter fee. And I never go, so, yeah.
I would just use one other analogy, there are a lot of people who don't want to cough up five hundred or more dollars for an airline lounge, because they're not frequent travelers, but they might pay fifty bucks for a one-time pass for that one time that they go traveling, so, you know, those fees work.
It's a double-edged sword, because, as we've said previously, if you open up a per-day fee, you may, you may lose some of your, you know, annual folks.
Right, and if it rains all summer, then what?
These are trade-off analyses, I want to know what the total revenue is of the pool. Um, what they believe, what they believe the risk is if we went to a different fee, fee structure, what's the, I mean, there's ways to model through this.
The revenue of the pool is about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
I mean, this shows that it's basically break-even the last two years. The data we have, the data that that Councilwoman McCready has, sorry, yeah, it's it's saying, it's saying that it was basically break-even the last two years. I mean, effectively, it was a little bit plus one year, a little bit minus the next, but those look like break-even numbers to me.
Okay, good.
So I, you know, that's slightly better than I expected, based on the discussions we've had, you know?
Okay, so where are we?
My 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 original question still stands, are we treating everybody equitably? If we're gonna raise fees on some and lower fees on others, is that equitable to the community at large?
I don't know, I don't know if you can actually even compare those. You know, I mean, a pool is a not a, I don't know, it's not really necessary, I think youth sports is a necessary thing that you want people to you know, and it's an opportunity for the kids in our town. The pool, you know, it's, it's an extra, it's a, it's.
So then should we make the swim team free? That's a sport.
Free for the swim team?
So access to the pool free?
I think part of that is, um, covering the coach, and that's all it should be, I don't know what the rest of it is. I don't know how much they pay the coach.
I mean, rec sports have, have, so if you're, if you're in baseball, you have a fee to play baseball and it covers the expenses.
It's all right here.
So, but I I don't disagree with you that maybe for people that are on the rec swim team, they should get access to the pool. They shouldn't, I might.
Yeah, they pay for the swim team.
So the reason why my kids don't swim is because I'm not willing to pay five hundred dollars to them to go do a third sport, that would be fun.
Bad dad.
Pretty sad.
There's only so much, there's so much you have to say, Jeff.
I don't, what if they charge for swim team?
It's right here, hold on.
But I agree, this should be equitable, this should be an equitable decision.
A hundred dollars for one kid, and then each additional kid is ninety dollars, if you get to six kids, it's one, it's free.
No, I'm talking more, I think they also have to members of the pool, don't, or am I speaking unintelligible?
You have to be a member of the pool to be on the swim team.
So I think there has to be fees, but then, do they also have to be a member of the pool to go swim for an hour?
Correct, they do.
Right, so they, their fee really is five hundred dollars, or or no, there are lots of, there's a single, single membership. So a lot of the kids that are on the swim team, they pay that single membership.
What's an adult swim clinic?
Can go by themselves.
Yeah, but if they're for a swim team and there's for swim team only?
Those might be master swimming.
But that's what they said. A lot of their single members were swim team.
It's a, July and August from the pool.
Yeah, single membership, yeah. So then they pay three thirty-five for.
Forty, forty-seven.
Do you know what the adult swim clinic is, anybody?
The fee?
No, I, I know the fee. What is it?
Oh, you can go learn how to swim if you're an adult. It's in the mornings.
Oh, it's a lesson.
It's master swimming, yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
It's, uh, it's Suzuki.
Yeah, he's been there forever. He's, he's the only coach they've had for this one team. My kids had him.
And see, the thing that's, that's, I'm tangling around here a little bit, is I know that, um, these fees go directly into the master budget. Versus the conversation for, the other conversation with the survey field, we're doing, we're talking about a capital expense that may or may not be in eight to ten years.
Right, these are, these are offsetting expenses.
Yeah, so, and Pleasant Valley, I'm just looking it up on my phone, they charge a new member registration fee and a re-registration fee. Uh, for new, for, if you're multiple, if you come back the next year. But they, their early bird rate is four hundred and fifteen for residents and non-residents is six eighty-five. So it's comparable to, to ours.
Yeah.
Did you say four fifteen?
But how much, how much is the?
Four fifteen and six eighty-five.
Ten dollars less. And how much is the, uh, the pledge or whatever you put up front?
Uh, three fifty for family and one fifty every year thereafter. And it's different for seniors and singles.
You mean, you have to put that up every year in addition to the membership fee?
So I noticed here that there's a guest pass after five P M.
But you have to go with a member.
We're able to.
You have to find a member, yeah.
You have to go with a member.
I got that, but if we're able to discriminate that they can do that after five P M, why not just have a membership after five P M as well?
They have, if you're, if you go with a member, you can also go and pay ten bucks.
I think what Jeff was saying, Christine earlier said.
Yeah, have, have a membership for, you, you can't come before five P M, the family membership, but it's an after five P M membership, for example, which would come in at some lesser fee than the four ninety-five. And then we have a senior guest fee for three dollars. Why do we even have that at all? I mean, really.
Seniors are free.
Well, this is.
Guest, out, out of, not, non-residents.
No, it's for residents and non-residents.
Is it?
There's two columns there.
Oh, yeah, so what, oh, so if I'm a senior, I got a free membership and I wanna bring a guest, I'd pay three dollars for my guest.
That's what it's saying.
Yeah, it's not just.
Well, that's another, there's two columns. There's a, you, 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 the left-hand column is for residents, the right-hand, at least.
Yeah, but, um, a senior who's not a member, uh, is not a resident pays a hundred and forty dollars for a membership, and then if they bring a guest, it's three dollars.
Right, but if the guest is a mem, is a resident.
Then you don't have to pay.
They'd be free.
There's a fee here.
Yeah, it just, it probably should just say free there, Karen. It should just say free.
I'm, I'm just, the point is, I'm looking at this and there's some stuff here as I start parsing through it, it doesn't make sense.
Okay, so we're gonna send this back to the rec committee?
Yep. And what are we gonna ask them?
And, yeah, what do, what exactly are we asking?
I think they're gonna need to have, call a special meeting for this.
I think if they have a special meeting and maybe in addition to you as the liaison, maybe a couple other members.
Do we just wanna say that, you know, fee increases that are consistent with cost increases are what we wanna say?
That there's a dialogue.
Fee increases that are consistent with cost increases?
I, I, I think, well, we need a global fix, but I don't, that's happening. Well, you know, I think there's something to discuss, and without saying, well, it would be too hard to do, you know, some of these alternative ideas, and it won't.
Can't do this now.
Need public input and, you know, it'd be, it'd be iterative process, probably. So, so, so Jeff, as, as, can we address your issue, we'll give it to the, the, what's the company? The broad recreation committee master plan and say, we wanna come up with fee structures that make more sense.
Well, that was gonna be the next thing.
And then for the next meeting, February tenth, we want them to come back with a recommendation for fee increases that are.
Based on debt.
Based on the actual cost increase for that program.
Yes.
Is that what we would like to say?
It's de minimis. So I, I think there's a, a part of this process is a global, I'm gonna use the word fix, maybe it's not a fix but a plan. So I wanna bridge this for six months, so we can come up with different fees, different programs, different revenue streams.
Right, but that's, that's the difference between the, the, the three week recommendation is what are we gonna do for this year? And then the, the six, the longer term is in the broader recreation plan or borough, open space recreation.
I wanna keep it afloat for this year so we can fix it in two thousand twenty-one.
That was a field, keep it afloat.
But, but what is the ask? We, we just wanna know what the cost increase is based on, cause that we know. We know that was minimum wage.
I think there was some question, at least in my mind, based on the explanation, whether or not the increases were related to the cost for that program, or whether it was kind of more of a little bit of a haphazard approach.
The back, the back end of that math doesn't make sense. I think it was a dollar increase in, in minimum wage, right?
Not even.
So that's forty thousand dollars. Over the course of three months.
So what you wanna say is?
You have to have three lifeguards on, I think it's three, every, and they're open from eight to seven, something like that?
And they're not always on, they get like twenty minutes off within each hour, so you have to overstaff.
I mean, is, is that?
But, but, I just, I just pause on this one point, because they.
Yeah. Yeah, we didn't have it even at the rec meetings, so it would be good.
The increase in the quantity of lifeguards occurred this year, yes?
Yeah, it was last nineteen.
Within two thousand nineteen, which was effectively a break even year.
Yeah.
We had more, so really it should just be the difference in minimum wage change this year.
Right.
So maybe if we sharpen our pencil and we just look at this a little bit closer, we may find that we were overestimating the amount of increase that we were anticipating.
Do we have to go over the minimum wage? We're competing with other, other groups like the Y and other pools who are actually paying more money than we have offered.
They had trouble getting people to, are you asking me?
Yeah, I don't recall. Remember there was some concern that we weren't getting the applicants, returning people, cause they were better offers in other places?
There is definitely competition out there for guards, um, and from the Y and from, from the Valley and, and other organizations. Um, so they do wanna try to make it attractive, uh, obviously, and, and, and increase the, the wage for the guards, so they do come in more.
I, I think that makes sense. I mean, we need to pay so that we have qualified people at the pool and it's safe for everybody. So if that means that we have to raise that particular subsegment, subsegment of the employees by a rational amount that's consistent with what market requirements are. I'm happy with that. That's a safety question. We want qualified people watching the pool.
So what exactly, again, what's the ask? What is it you want them to do so they have specific?
Justify, justify, what is the minimum amount that needs to be raised to do what Tom was just saying? Cover the increase in minimum wage and make sure that we're competitive to hire good lifeguards.
So then you want, you want a breakdown on that?
Yeah, I mean, and again, I, that is what we did during the meeting, but it was all done.
It was kinda haphazard.
Back of the math, yeah, back of the napkin, like you said.
So we'll just make sure, we'll double check, maybe the numbers are already good?
Yeah, cause they, again, yeah, it was.
And then we'll have the data to show that?
A bigger amount to increase, and then, you know, members of the committee were upset by the.
Okay, Bergen.
So do we, do, does the rec committee even need to meet, or we, can we just ask the, the staff to give us that information?
Yeah, I mean, I, somebody could just throw it on an Excel spreadsheet, the number of lifeguards, the hours.
I'll check with them. I think we'll probably need to sit down and just to make sure we have all the basic code.
Okay.
Um, it might be sure be, uh, Neil might be able to whip that up very quickly.
Yeah, as long as they come prepared to the meeting.
Try, I think we should, sit down and, and have them use the.
Okay.
Yeah, so we need to have Neil and Cheryl work up the numbers before the meeting, though.
I think so, yeah.
Cause that's what didn't happen this time, and that's what it was.
So Ralph, can you make sure they do that ahead of whatever scheduled meeting is?
Yep.
Thank you.
And actually, I know this has been a little rough, so I want, thank you. I believe you're now the new chair of the rec committee.
No, he's not.
Ted Dolan is the new chair.
Ted, Ted Dolan is the new chair.
Alton, you've been on there a while, though, right?
Yeah, you've been here.
I mean, rec, rec is our most publicly fixed department, so, no?
Oh, it's not, right?
Um, so thank you for, for what you're doing. Sorry, this is a little rough, man.
Yeah. All right, we're good with that, so we're gonna pull that one off. That's twenty thirty-five. Um, are we gonna pull off twenty thirty-one and you're just gonna redo the personnel handbook to reflect it, or do we have to approve it?
Let's approve it, this year.
It's, it's up to you, but I think you just had a question of why, why we were had, we had.
We're gonna approve it and change it. We're, we're gonna approve it, but I, I agree with the mayor. Let's just go ahead and change it.
Change it for the future, okay.
Sorry, are we, are, we are approving it then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Was there anything else on here that we had, anybody wanted to discuss or talk about?
I just wanted to ask, what are, what are we doing for this women's suffrage? The, uh, the resolution was a little bit.
It's really just acknowledging that we're aware of it. One of the things we took out was they want you to light up the building purple. And Doug did a lot of work to figure that out, and if you put a purple light on this brick building, it, it looks brown. You're not gonna see purple. So we took out the lighting to purple.
Okay.
We should make the Christmas tree purple.
Yeah, can we do something purple somewhere?
I don't know, do the library purple?
Last year, it was up till March, right?
Even if we just put some purple lights around our sign for a week.
What's as significant as a purple?
It's for suffrage, yeah.
I know, I think they're talking about having a pink tree. For March.
It doesn't have to be in the ordinance, but maybe we can find something.
I can ask them to do a central display on.
That would be nice, on living suffrage, yeah. Cause it just said that we celebrate it in some way and acknowledge, you know, that it's, it's.
At the library, right?
I was wondering, can, can we, can we hold a, um, voter registration drive, you know? Uh, you know, encourage women who may not be registered to register?
Sure, okay.
Sure.
Wait, oh, I know, cause Carrie's with the lead, that's why I looked at her. I know you guys do voter registration.
Voter registration, um, may, maybe, maybe, maybe we can, I'll put a desk up. The library's celebrating, it's, it's twentieth, the twentieth anniversary of the opening of the new building on March first. Um, I'll put a voter registration desk, I'll, I'll bring, I'll bring voter registration stuff.
Or even do something in the high school for, for the girls who are turning eight, who's, who are turned eighteen.
The lady's already doing that, that's the answer about that one.
Yeah, but maybe on the suffrage table, if they do a display, they could have the forms there.
Yeah.
You know, that might be kinda a little.
It's consistent with the idea, isn't it?
I mean, that way we're actually taking an action.
I'll save it after.
Yep. Okay. Anything else? We good? Somebody wanna move them without thirty-five?
I'll move them without thirty-five.
Roll call.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Darnian?
Yes.
Okay, um, we have our reports next, um, public safety, you did have a meeting, right, Jeff?
Yeah, we did, um, let me just get my notes here. So I met with Chief Valentine and Lieutenant Remy and, and unfortunately, we had some mix up on the dates, and so the other two members couldn't be there, but. We, we, uh, we talked about capital budget needs, we talked about some of the plans for speeding mitigation. Um, we wanted to reinvestigate something that had been looked at once before, which is, uh, the, the proposal for a sidewalk on Berners Avenue. And, and take a relook at that. It was cost, considered cost prohibitive in the past, but we thought it would maybe worth a relook. Uh, we did talk about what might be some potential for shared services. We talked about promoting and developing the cert teams and gaining more, uh, volunteerism. Uh, and, uh, uh, we talked about crime statistics.
Okay, um, finance?
So the finance committee met, uh, again in, uh, January. It's about, I think, our third meeting for budget related discussions for this year. Obviously have a lot of requests that have come in from different departments and from, uh, activities that we're pursuing, like downtown development. Um, so we're, we're working very hard to try and keep the budget, uh, as, uh, needs based as possible. Only do what's critically important. Um, I would encourage the other members who aren't on the finance committee to set aside some time in the month of February to meet with the borough staff. To both familiarize ourselves with the budget, but then also provide us with any input or feedback, uh, of areas that you think we should be focused on. Areas where you think there's opportunity, or you have a particular area of interest in, um, you know, we're looking at the budget line by line. The three finance committee members, there's, there's no stone that we're leaving unturned as we go through it, and we're trying to be as judicious as possible in the approach. Uh, we don't have any, uh, numbers to share at this time, because we're still at a very draft stage. But, uh, I think probably, uh, in the next, uh, couple of meetings, we'll probably have some draft data that we can share with you.
Yeah, so actually, uh, based on your recommendation from last time Chad and I went and met with, um.
Great.
Ralph and Leslie, um, already to just review what was there for twenty nineteen. We didn't say anything for twenty twenty, obviously, but just kinda how it's set up and what's in there. Um, and so actually for, for next steps for twenty twenty, we would need to, like Jeff, and the rest of us who aren't on the finance committee. We need to come to, to the borough to review it, or.
I'm just, I'm just saying that's a good opportunity. We, last year, what we did was, you know, if we go back historically, a lot of times the finance committee would just meet. They'd come to the borough council with a recommendation, and the only people that, you know, were, had the detailed time and effort in looking at the, each line item by line on budget. Were the three people that were on the finance committee. This predated my time on the council, but when I joined, that's what the process was. Last year, we tried something different, which was, we had the three committee members that worked diligently, but then we also allowed an opportunity for the other council members that weren't on the finance committee. To come in and preview the, the budget, so that they had additional concerns, information, ideas that they wanted to provide. They weren't precluded from doing that. Not every council member availed themselves of that opportunity, so I'm just providing that as a process point again. So, you know, you're welcome to come in if you have a pet project that you want funded, or if you have something where you think we're spending too much money and you, you don't wanna focus on that. You don't have to go through the finance committee, although obviously, yeah, asking us is fine too. But, uh, you know, just an opportunity for everybody to be directly involved and feel that, you know, the information sharing is going both ways. Whatever you're interested in gets incorporated into the budget, whatever, you know, the budget, what we're doing on the budget, you get full communication, you get advance notice about it. You're not just seeing it on the day that we're voting on it.
Thank you, now, you know, we, we spent some time in Friday, and I like what I'm hearing from you.
Yeah.
My priority is, you know, running the, the government well.
Hmm.
And then adding on from there, all right? So I like where you're going with that.
All right, so then, I mean, the basics, the basics of the update is that we're in the midst of the process, that we're going through another iteration probably. Or at the most, two iterations before we bring some draft materials to the, to the council, and then after that, there's still a, a process of a couple of meetings where we'll go formally adopt anything.
And have a public hearing.
And there'll be a public hearing.
Do it.
Yes, you'll see some of the data from last year that we presented, and we've had additional backup data as well.
Yeah, and are we looking at the services that we provide from a budget perspective? I mean, I know you said you're going line by line, but overall, from a service perspective, if, like what we were saying about rec, right? If rec has the pool, what's the revenue, what's the expense? If we have a service, what's, what's our revenue, what's our expense? What's the, what's the value add for the town? Are we looking at it from that lens?
Why, you're, you're the chair.
You're the mayor?
It's, it's more the dollars, the budget's really more the dollars than sensing. I think the, when we do something, we, we, the value adds assumed. You know, rightly or wrongly, that's kind of what's what we've inherited, and it's really just trying to make us, I don't know.
Yeah, I think there aren't that.
There aren't that many discretionary categories.
There are services you can pull out as a separate service. You know, I mean, there's things we have to do. We have to repair the roads, we have to, you know, we have to schedule, we have to plow. So those are things that you can't take away.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the leaf pickup is one that's, you know, we consider an extra. But I think it's, you don't dare, try to take that away, honestly.
I mean, for, for example, rec, you know, I guess the value added analysis would happen at the committee levels, and then we just kind of would look at the, the dollars numbered and try to, okay, how does it fit into the bigger picture?
Yeah, I think it would be good to see. I mean, at least I would like to see the discretionary versus non-discretionary.
Yeah, oh, no, we do look at that, cause there's a certain amount of that is fixed, that we can't.
Most of it, unfortunately.
You know, you've got, um, your insurance costs, your salaries, pensions, those kinds of things that we're locked into. Um, the, um, purse contribution, which goes up, is it finished yet, or is it still going up every year by?
It's gone up.
Is it till we get to a hundred percent, is it? Or we add a hundred percent?
No, well, the purse, we, we get the number right from the state.
No, but I mean, it used to be that we, we paid a percentage of it, and then it's, they decided that, that municipality would pay a hundred percent of the purse. Where it used to be the state paid part of it and we paid part of it.
I think we're still paying part, oh, the part.
Okay, cause I know they're working up every year to get to a hundred percent.
But it's just still a sizable increase.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty hefty. So those are things that, you know, really lock it in. So what would you say is like eighteen percent is discretionary?
Oh, I.
Or even that much, sixteen? It's a small part.
You know, Gina and Chad had asked for me to dig up some of that information, and I will do that. But we're, we're going to, we're gonna reach out to all the department heads. So Leslie, you know, and ask for, you know, get some input from them as to what's discretionary, what isn't. And then we'll take that, and then we'll look at the budget from our perspective and add to it. And, you know, they'll, to give you a number of what is and what isn't, I couldn't do that right now, but before the process is over, we'll have.
Yeah, it's, it's fairly small.
It is, I will say, it is small.
Cause I know when I did the school budgets, it maybe eighteen percent was the most of it, when you get through all those.
It is small, unfortunately, I, you know, I concur with that, it will be small. But we'll, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll give a much closer number than just an estimate on that. But statutes, we deal with state statutes versus the mayor. And Tom said, there are things we have to do, we have to plow snow, we have to provide police protection, we have to.
We have to have a fire company?
You know, we just have to do, pay the pensions, pay the health benefits, pay the insurance, pay the salaries. They're all, it's all part of it. Not much plus.
No, and a lot of times finding, I think, those value-added, the economies, has to come to be a bottom-up process cause you can't do it from the budget level down. So you have to come from the department, so you know, if they, the way to save money, doing something, they have to tell us really. You know, largely, I mean, discretionary can define it as like, you know, the capital requests we get is a multiple of what we can afford, so that's kind of quasi-discretionary, cause we can't, you know, get to pick the few winners every year. It's not easy, I mean, it's, you know.
And again, I think once we have priorities set, that will make that process easier.
But I think also, that's the, the opportunity to have, you know, multiple eyes on the budget. And people say, well, what about this, did you think about that? I think that's helpful, and I think that, you know, anything that, you know, you wanna bring forward as a, you know, why are we doing this, the way we're doing it? You know, I think those are valid questions that we should address and, and answer for everyone's satisfaction.
And it's always good to have fresh eyes on it from a different perspective, cause it just gives you a, you know, a, something we may not have missed or we accept. And you know, you ask the question, you know, we hadn't asked that. So, yeah, I hope you'll all take advantage of going to look at it. What were we up to? Public Works, Christine?
Oh, Public Works had a meeting.
Oh, I skipped personnel, I'm sorry.
You wanna go to personnel first?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we'll start personnel, we skipped you. You didn't meet.
Can I talk about personnel? Say we met.
Just summarize.
Well, I know you were talking about getting the evaluation process, so that you can talk about.
Yeah, so we talked in general, we're gonna look at different things. And I think, you know, Rob's an able participant in this. Number one, you know, how do we create more of a outcomes-oriented culture in the borough government? To make sure that we're going down a similar line, similar to what we talked about as, as a council. And possibly change the way that we think about compensation from the bonuses in the future, something to discuss. Versus just cost, cost of living adjustments. That was a big discussion. But these are all hypothetical starting points.
That's good, thank you. Okay, now Christine, sorry.
Sorry, um, the Public Works Committee met on January twenty-seventh. Gina was there, John McDowell, our engineer, Bob Brightley, and Doug Walker. So I have a lot of updates, there's a lot of projects going on. The, we already voted on the sewer plant update. The Dayton Crescent sewer line that's being repaired, that's a very needed repair. Doug went through, Doug and John went through some of the details that this is to prevent a failure that similar to what already occurred last year. So this is kind of getting ahead of something that could potentially happen in that neighborhood, Dayton Crescent. The second item here is topsoil specs. We talked about this briefly before, but as a result of the slow project, we've now revised our topsoil specs. And the new specs exceed the DOT, which is the state's requirement for size of stones and other organic matter, reducing the size down to one inch from two. So in addition to that, all stockpiled soil has to be placed on a tarp before it goes into the residence front lawn. We also updated the timing of testing and certification. And again, we talked about this before, but just to reiterate that it, it is now changed. So all these future projects that I'm gonna talk about are gonna be under these specs, which is a good thing for us. So Hull and Lyndeberry, the much-awaited project over there is funded. It's going out to bid, or actually may have gone out to bid already, January sixteenth, last week. I think they're on the borough website, there's a couple of bids on there. The award will be mid, late February, and work's gonna start April. Residents are being notified right now, letting them know that if you wanna open the road and have your gas line connected, you need to hurry it up and do it now. So that after it's paved, we don't have to worry about people trying to open the road. We also notify all the utility companies, so they know that we're working on this road. And please don't come to us later and ask us to destroy it. So then, the next project after Hull and Lyndeberry is White Knack Road. One of the things we voted on was an easement. There's a resident who we filed an easement, so that we can work.
There's a bank stabilization project, right, for drainage, is that what it is?
Yes, so we're also saving a large sycamore tree as per what the resident asked us, which is very nice of us to do, and nice for the tree.
Especially nice for the tree.
This'll be work to be performed while school is out of session, which is also good, because the road will be closed. White Knack Road, in June, when this gets paved, if all goes according to this plan, residents will be detoured. But again, this is summer, no school buses, so it should be okay. Lloyd Road is also on our project list. Funding available through a 2015 ordinance and a $200,000 DOT grant, which is also good news. The plans were sent for DOT approval back in December of this year. The co-op's gonna mill and pave, and this work will begin in April.
Lot going on, Nate.
Okay. That was Lloyd Road, Washington Corner Road. Yeah, I know, we didn't meet for a long time. Washington Corner funding available and another $300,000 DOT grant, good work by John McDowell and Doug. Project plans are being finalized. There's also part of this, a county bridge replacement plan. So there's a bridge up there, and the county wants to replace it. They gave us plans which indicate that they wanna widen the bridge from twenty-four feet to twenty-eight feet. Which is kind of weird, because the road is a lot narrower. So we're still kind of working out those details with him. The road is definitely getting paved, but, right, isn't it, the, the bridge part is kind of, we're gonna see how it works with us. We're working with the county on that. Meeker Road is on our list too. A new water main installation is being done by New Jersey American Water, and they're gonna repave.
There's a moratorium on that road, right? So they're like pushing back on that one?
Oh, okay, so Meeker Road was paved five years ago, that's that one.
Less than five years ago, so now they wanna come in and tear up the road.
Yeah, so we wanna try to get them to repave it, is the plan.
As part of the project.
Right, which they probably were hopeful will comply with. Let's see. Twenty-twenty Capital Road ordinance has 1.8 million left in there. So Hull and Lyndeberry are against that. And Crestview, Ravine Lake, Chestnut, and Rippling Brook, all included in that. There's some other roads that we still have to discuss, because they're not fun, in the present funding. There's also some repair work that has to be done with this dam outside. And this is, we don't have a choice, basically, this is required by the DEP. So that's gonna be an extra expense for us, I think, probably talked about it in finance, maybe fifty thousand to eighty thousand to repair the dam. That is part of one of the things we voted on, Melick and Tully, the professional service that we just added to our professional services contract. Melick, Tully, they're working on the dam, so that's why we put them in resolutions for tonight. The pond culvert, which that's the reason why there's so much water around the side of the pond where the gazebo is. Work's gonna begin on that February seventeenth. Sorry, folks, library roof and HVAC work at the library is happening. That's gonna be a big project that we're working on right now. So there's also a generator that's being installed. And that's why you see those dumpsters in the parking lots, a lot of work going on at the library for the next month or so.
Generator for the lower floor.
Right, lower-level generator. Well, it's the same building, but, yeah. Can I keep going? Oh, so the main thing we did talk about, besides all these projects, is that since there's so many projects going on, and in the midst of a project, at times, there can be a change order that comes up. And at this point in time, if a change order arises during a project, whether it be, you know, they hit something that needs to be addressed, or if it's, it has to come before us to vote on it. And that oftentimes will slow down the progress on the projects and will lead to, you know, some delays. So what Doug and I and Gina all talked about was to enact a policy where the threshold of these change orders, if it's under six thousand, that it does not have to come before the council. So we were in favor of that, mainly because, you know, that seemed like a number that is right, you know, not high enough to warrant coming before us.
And it would also be, it wouldn't exceed the budget that was already approved.
Right, to under six thousand and within the original.
Right, to win the comment.
Yeah, the regulations talk about minor field modifications, it's already can be delegated.
Right.
We should probably leave it open and end its language like that, cause if it was six thousand one. And there's the definition, so I suggest that we do designate somebody as authorized to make minor field modifications, you know, globally, across all our countries, I think it's a great idea.
So long as it's within budget, right?
As long as it's within the approved budget, right.
So the number's fine without a cap, as long as it stays in budget?
Well, and, and there's a regulation that defines what minor field modifications, so it doesn't get on with the authority.
I'm okay with that.
And at some point, we still have to approve it, even if it's after the fact, don't we?
Well, it'd probably just be approved on a badge after the fact. Yeah, we come up in the cumulative list of change orders.
Right, yeah.
We should ask the Public Works Committee to review these, even if it's after the fact, minor field modifications to the Public Works. So somebody's being informed about the individual decisions.
Got it.
Yeah, so they're being flagged for the Public Works Committee, maybe?
Yeah, who's gonna be the person?
Christine, the chair.
I would say Doug or?
Or John?
Um, Doug, cause he's capital projects.
Yeah.
And I'm sure Doug's not gonna make any crazy decisions, but I'm thinking.
Yeah, I would think either will be.
And it's within the budget that was approved already.
They all have to sign off on it, I have to sign them, and they're all done.
I mean, my choice would be Doug, right?
Well, my only, my only comment on that would be, there's facilities projects, and there's, and there's these other projects, right? So we, the way we're, our structure is set up, there's really two different areas that might have a minor field modification. Doug isn't responsible for all of them, right?
No, I think that you'd only get them on, like, the big projects, the really big ones.
Like the railroad paving?
You're not gonna get a change order on a smaller project, right?
Well, you may, but Christine's right, under the regulation, it's gotta be approved in writing beforehand by the government body.
Right.
Unless you designate somebody who makes minor field modifications.
So what?
Ralph, make it Ralph.
So what he mentioned was like, you know, it could really.
Either one of them could come to me.
Right.
Yeah, so I think Ralph, just because it covers all of our bases.
Yeah, and it's like, you know, it's weird to be approving your own work, like after I said Doug.
I think Ralph, yeah.
It's kind of like, oh, I'm running the project, I don't make the change, and yeah, it's weird.
Because most of these, you have, you know, you're dealing with a contractor, and if you tell them, okay, stop work, you might lose them for a long period of time.
It's your fault if they're behind schedule and.
They'll have a resolution for the February tenth.
Okay, yeah, I mean, good.
So minor field modifications in the past were addressed through ordinance changes, is that right?
Yes, uh, not ordinance changes.
Sometimes the resolution avoiding the contract.
Individual resolutions said minor.
It wasn't done globally.
So now we're doing it globally?
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
There's some other projects going on at the train station. There's mold remediation happening downstairs in the police station, I think it's almost done, I hope.
Another two weeks or so.
Another two. And that's about it.
Okay.
Could I ask one thing?
Yeah.
Um, so one of the things to add to the personnel, cause there was just a really long list that Ralph and I talked about along with Jeff and Gina, is when we approve capital projects and different things, there's going to be a personnel part of this that we're gonna start talking about a little bit more. So that was a long list, how that's training the local government, do we have enough resources to implement and, and along the right timeline? So that's something that we'll start to talk about and bring here. If the lists are getting too long and we can't complete things, the time away.
Okay.
I have a request to take back to the Public Works, so this relates to the library, you mentioned that they're doing the air conditioning. But one of the things that was recommended to us, or asked of, of the library, was that they run the air conditioner in the evenings during the summer to prevent condensation. But that's really gonna hit the budget, that's gonna be increased electrical costs. So can we have that revisited? I mean, does it have to be all evening? Can it be put on a timer? It doesn't have to be certain hours? What can we do to minimize that increase in electrical costs?
I would have to ask Doug about that.
And I was gonna say, just to take that, we have to, it doesn't become real until the summer, so if you can take that back to Public Works, or just talk to Doug about it.
Well, what, I don't, who said that we have to run it all night?
Doug.
Oh, okay.
And reduce condensation where?
In the library.
Yeah.
Inside the building?
Yeah.
Condensation like on the windows?
I think kind of ceiling, no?
Correct me. Condensation is causing ceiling leaks.
Ruins the tiles.
So the humidity builds up overnight, the air comes on in the morning, there's condensation, drops down.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So maybe we only have to run it like an hour or two before they open or something? I, I don't know what the solution is, but to run it all.
Run it at a modest level or something.
Right, just enough to.
So library, we're looking at solar, at all?
Yes.
And what was the determination?
Uh, we're looking at solar, there's, there's a limited area for it because of the way the roof is designed.
Okay.
And it's not easy to run.
Alright. I, I talked to John and Doug about that. Because of the slant of the roof, you'd have to build, you actually have to build out the roof, so it faces in a better direction. It becomes prohibitive.
Yeah, we looked at this very carefully when the schools did their major solar project, consulted with their consultants, which didn't cause them to worry about anything, cause they gave, they gave us the time and the effort to have their consultants come over and work. It didn't make sense. And also, that was, I mean, they were also, it was under the system, the county was counting. And it seemed like it was a very odd. Financial obligations were very uncertain.
What year was that?
It actually fell apart, the whole county project.
Yeah, county project, uh, two thousand and fourteen, fifteen.
Yeah, it's hardly, uh, cause Morris County did it first, and then when Somerset tried to do the similar projects, something with the consultants got.
Yeah.
It didn't work.
The financial people who were on the library board were very concerned about the county.
You know, cause it was when you could get all the recs back and, and they overestimated what they were.
The amount of the, the solar power that had to be resold.
Yeah.
To the.
Back to the grid.
To the power companies to make this thing work, it meant the library wasn't gonna get much saving. That was, but principally, for us, it was, it was the orientation of the roof.
Okay.
I think in our finance committee meeting, we talked about other locations, and I think, we're gonna reach out to Bassington Ridge and see how they, we're doing, how they feel they're, we're doing with their solar. We're doing, how they feel they're, we're doing with their solar installation up at the recycling.
Yeah, so we'll talk.
At the recycling.
So if we get to just, just be interesting what their experience is and.
Yeah. Um, one, I had a question for public works, I know we talked about back, when was it, we passed that um. Ordinance about spending a hundred and forty-six thousand on the smaller projects that we wanted to do. Um and I think we asked Doug, I asked Doug about them and he thought they were all on hold.
Open space?
Yeah, you remember this list of a hundred and forty-six?
Yeah, I think we were in a meeting not too long ago and we asked for a progress report on all of them.
Right, and I think the under, what Doug seemed to understand, he thought these were all on hold until we did the comprehensive plan, but.
That's not my understanding.
That wasn't ours, so we wanna proceed with these, you remember the list?
We didn't talk about it in our last meeting.
Well, one of the things was the plan, which we're gonna do, but then it was the lower polo drainage, the path around polo grounds. Handicap access to the fields, the little dog stations, the gazebo upgrades, the koalas and dugouts at the Rose Bowl, that list we were gonna do.
You have none of those?
My understanding is we're gonna do them.
Yeah, so maybe bring them back to the committee and say, is that, oh, you aren't here, was that your understanding?
Yeah, well, I I could see both ways, I think it was, we were, could've went back and forth on what to do and we got the uh. The money in there, said we allocated for this, but we didn't give any clear direction to go do it, I think, so I think.
Yeah.
It's our fault, we need less clarity.
I don't think we were clear enough.
Yeah, are those two thousand nineteen budgetary items, cuz the money was.
Yeah, that's the, that's the open space tax, the twenty-five percent that we.
And I think, yeah, you.
It was from twenty eighteen.
That does not affect this year's fiscal budget.
I could see why it's taken, it'd be like, this is what you allocated, we didn't get the green light to actually go do it.
Well, I mean, normally, in the past, when we pass something like this, that's the go ahead, that's passing.
I think this is the conversation with the.
Well, I'm just saying, but in the past, when we passed an ordinance.
It means do it.
That means do it, there's no other ordinances we passed, where we said, let's come back and revisit.
Probably think the same thing.
So all I wanna ask is, we're gonna do, we wanna do these, yes, okay, so we should have public works them to get on these things.
What's the ordinance number?
Ah, here, you can have it.
Oh, thank you.
Pass that down to cookies are going. Um, okay, so if we can get moving on some of those when spring comes, that'd be great. Um, you have the reports from Jeff Price, the housing and zoning report, do we have any questions for Jeff while he's here?
All right, you just had an extra piece of paper that says, which was the annual report from two thousand nineteen. No questions?
Anybody, we're good?
In the housing meeting, the housing group, even the thirteenth, for the first meeting here in the both of the.
Right, and we got, I think, a couple new members, so we're trying. Yeah, get that committee a little more active, they actually they've been. Okay, good. All right, council liaison, Christine, you wanna start, did you have any?
I went to, let's see, cultural arts the other night. Don't tell anyone. It it was a secret, top secret meeting. And uh we talked about the mural project, which is progressing awesomely nicely. And uh we have some other ideas on how to help um get that project. Moving forward in terms of sponsoring, we need people to sponsor our mural project. So um there's a link on downtown Bernardsville's website uh. That they are the recipient of the grant from the county, so in addition to that county funding, we also need some um. Interested residents or any residents who are interested in the mural can uh donate to that.
Is, will there be like a, some way of recognizing who participated?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
So those details are being worked out, but it'll probably be uh some type of plaque at the site of the mural.
How much funding is needed?
If you know, uh about twenty thousand, I think we're looking to raise. But you know how the, the wall goes like this and then there's a, a wing on each end, the lower wing? That's where we're thinking we would put the donor, like a plaque on either side.
There's a plaque on one side, I think that says the bridge dedication date and stuff, but other than that, there's three, three other locations.
Yeah, so we thought we would, you know, they'll just paint those a flat color and then put plaques on to recognize the donors.
What, what is the money for, cuz I heard the paint was donated, right?
Yeah.
It's the artist fee, which was a tremendous amount of work and and, you know, and through the whole project, it's also um. The promotions, the, what else did we do, the meetings, um.
We need to um have.
Whitewash the wall, we've got um. Uh we have to get a trailer for all the supplies.
Crossing guards.
What's the overall cost that we have to raise?
It was around twenty, I think, that we set, depending on.
Well, um minus the in-kind donations, wait.
I think that was after the, the whole budget was thirty-two and then we got the grant and we had some in-kind, we had a, a few donations already.
Oh, okay.
It would've come out of twenty thousand, okay.
Yeah.
How much did the county give us?
Uh five. Yeah.
And when, I think originally they, the artists of Miss Homestead said that we might see a draft idea in January, so what's, what's the new date for that?
Um, we actually have the draft, we're gonna have a reveal fundraising party to which you will all be invited, not to, not to fundraise, but to, to come to the reveal party. Cuz we wanted it to be kind of like a, you know.
Do you have a date for that?
Um, March sixth, just so we have time to get it all planned.
It's a kind of a preliminary date.
Cuz they're still tweaking some things on it. I think it was March sixth, it's a Friday night, it'd be at Studio Seven, um but it'll be an invitation event.
Yeah, so we'll make sure it's on the calendar so it doesn't skip to something else.
Right, was it March sixth, I think we said March sixth.
I think so.
Is that a Friday night?
That's a Friday.
Yeah.
Um, I also went to the open space meeting, so the open space committee is working on um. You know, just helping residents that live near Peters Tract. To in, you know, kind of get a feel for envision how that area should be. Um so they're preparing that meeting and it's, it's mainly for the neighboring properties of that, which you are.
Yeah, Olivia just texted me, yes, March sixth, so she must have wanted it.
Um, the mayor's wellness campaign met and and you'll probably give an update in your mayor's update, are you doing that too? Uh so the fitness crawl is coming, please mark your calendar also for that. It is February, oh my gosh, ninth and um. That will be at the library to start and various locations in town, the businesses in town are offering free classes. So the schedule uh will be staggered throughout the day, you don't have to participate in the entire day, but you can do part of it and there's prizes and a lot of fun.
So everyone's aware?
It's nine thirty, nine to ten thirty is the library, the, the classes start at ten thirty and go till twelve.
Yep, it's on the Bernardsville website, it's like the second item on the main page and um.
Chris is working on getting the schedule up, cuz now we have the schedule of who's offering which classes when, and there's also CPR training. There's blood pressure testing, there's makeup, there's hair, you wanna get an idea of a new haircut.
Smoothies.
What?
Smoothies.
Smoothies, yeah, cuz fresh presses is involved, you can get a chair massage, lots of stuff going on.
Shoprite's gonna have food.
Shoprite's gonna have a, yeah, table where they'll be doing demonstrations of how to make healthy snacks.
I'm not promising, I'm gonna certify Drucker's safety trainer for the state. One of the things that comes up a lot is getting local parents safety trained to be U Sports coaches.
Yeah, usually Cheryl organizes it.
Something like that. It might, 'cause I'm gonna hold one in February anyway. And if I could get, let me see if I can get time at the school.
Well, maybe, this is.
Do it in kind, in, in line.
Yeah, but that's like a three hour training, right?
Three hours of torture, yes.
Yes, I've sat through your class.
Well, this is February ninth. I think maybe um, so there's gonna be tables set up, maybe you could set up a little table and a signup sheet for parents who are interested in that. Um, then they could sign up. Last but not least, I attended the School of St. Elizabeth's, Bellingby, Baylen Shankman won, eighth grader, and my daughter Toni came in second.
Oh, congratulations, to everybody involved.
Yes.
Okay, um Gina, did you go to any recreation we heard from, so?
Yeah, yeah, rec we heard all about, but I did wanna um promote a couple of things, cuz Senior Pizza Bingo is Wednesday, February nineteenth, at the Wellness Center.
I always go to that.
Um, and um, you know, rec and travel basketball were run by a vendor this year, which has not been done before. And uh so this is where the request for um having surveys was um, was made. So do you think that we can ask for the surveys to be done for the basketball and the other programs that rec runs? And not individualized, but just um, you know, generic.
Like an evaluation form, like after the program, what did you like, what didn't like?
And then one, like open comments, so that we can, you know, gain feedback and, and um, update things. Um, the wrestling participation is, was up from last year, um after school enrichment programs will start in February. Um, summer programs, so you had asked before about timing, I think, um Jeff, and. They said they'll likely publish it in March, so we do have some time, we'll be okay. Um, let's see, and then we talked about all the stuff that you guys, we talked about at length. Um before, and then we also talked about ideas to increase the pool membership and other um team type activities were, were discussed as well. So, hmm, much more to do though on that. Um, I also attended the Board of Health. Um, and unfortunately, we did not have a quorum, which is why we, um they will be super thankful that we passed um. The ordinance to increase their membership, um so we do need more people on the Board of Health. Um, and so uh we, I think we need to look at the Skills Banks form, but I think some of them are on for, for later, right? Um, and so. Then I, I'm sure other people know this already, but one thing I learned is that we contract for um the Board of Health for inspections and things like that with Basking Ridge. Um, and then, you know, we, the, the fees that we collect back go to, to pay that contract down, so. Very good deal.
Thank you. Um, Tom?
So I missed the shade tree committee, but um I was in a, me, another meeting with Tom Wood, who's on the shade tree committee. And I mentioned that there was a location that you had, talked about historical location for a tree and. We got that sycamore donated, am I saying it right, sycamore, was it?
I think it was a sycamore, wasn't it, we got this from the tree that they cut down somewhere, yeah.
So um suggestions for that location should be forwarded to the, say, shade tree committee, if anybody has a location, they'd like to. Advocate for, the shade tree committee's considering that, um I think, I, I mentioned that you had a location in mind or historical picture of something. So we could forward that on to the shade tree committee, that'd be great. Um, I don't have another update from that, cuz I, I actually missed that particular meeting. Uh, the H-PAC meeting I did attend, uh they talked about progress related to a grant that they had previously announced and everybody's aware of, so I'm not, it's not new money, but it, I just wanted to say they. Closing in on, on finalizing all the paperwork related to a over two hundred thousand dollar grant, uh related to Donster Squibb, that's something that they've previously presented to us and talked about. It's not new money, money that they talked about before, but that was discussed in the H-PAC meeting. Um, they also talked about getting new representatives for H-PAC, I asked Anthony to send over anybody who had checked off H-PAC as an interest to them, so they could review. Their resumes and stuff, so they would provide some input back to us, if you're interested in that, Mayor, uh cuz they were thinking that they could use some new representation on the committee.
When they lost one member, who did they lose, uh well, yeah, there's one.
They might have lost one and I think that they've talked about the fact that.
Down one already.
And and this, this, this is not specific to the H-PAC, but I think maybe we as a council should have a policy about attendance. Uh, you know, these are volunteer assignments and of course, you know, people have multiple, multiple things that they need to do, it's hard for people to attend sometimes and. All, with all good intention, they may not be, may find themselves unable to attend committee meetings, and I think that, you know, if it comes to that, you know, if somebody has a multi-year. Assignment, but hasn't been able to attend for six months or more, maybe we should, as a policy, say, you know.
I think we do, don't we, just we don't have.
Well, this is state law, it applies to all the statutory words and commissions.
This is, H-PAC's not statutory, right?
So I do think we can have stricter requirements for advisory committees and not just follow the state law.
Okay.
Do you know what it is for the statutory?
It's not very burdensome to remember, it's like eight, eight consecutive weeks or four consecutive meetings, whichever is longer without permission. Of the board, and the board has to initiate the complaint that somebody's not attending, it's difficult to get somebody off a statutory board of commission based on non-attendance.
Huh, interesting. Uh, can we hand that to the personnel committee to uh come up with a policy on?
I just think something that we could, you know, when we make people aware, when they volunteer for the committee, hey, we appreciate your volunteerism. But if you find yourself unable to attend for extended period of time, please let us know and we'll get somebody else to. Yeah, and I, not to say that people, you know, aren't appreciated, they're definitely appreciated, but sometimes life gets in the way, you know?
One of the things that also has come up is virtual attendance. Um, and I've heard mixed things in regards to by statute, if they had to be physical or virtual attendance was okay.
There, there's nothing in the statute, and we have it in our administrative code, uh that you can attend by phone if it's a special meeting. Uh scheduled on less than ten days' notice, or attendance is needed to provide a quorum.
That's um for statutory boards and that's council.
That's an ordinance, there's no state law.
Yeah.
Because in fact, the public meetings act describes a meeting uh as attended in person or electronically, so there's no prohibition by state law of attending.
So for committees, we can make our own policy or something?
Yes, yeah. And in the council's case, the only reason prior to councils did it that way is they didn't want every council member to attend each by phone, you know, all the time. They thought it was important for council members to be here with public.
That's what I have for those.
All right.
Not nothing.
So, Jeff?
Yeah, I do a couple, um. So following up on the library, just uh it was mentioned that uh, maybe it was, I forgot, the, the roof repair started.
Yeah.
Uh which was long awaited and much anticipated. Um, a couple of upcoming events, uh we have obviously the, it's been promoted, the February eighth golf event.
The mini golf.
Last year, those are fun, everybody should do it. Um, March first, that was mentioned as the twentieth anniversary, hardly been spent twenty years, but that's from two to five. Um, the library, um at the meeting that took place last week, uh there was some discussion for the twenty twenty budget. Sure is gonna meet with the uh budget committee in February, I'm meeting with her and with the treasurer next week to go over that. So we'll have those presentations, uh we discussed the uh air conditioning condensation issue. Uh and then um, uh there's been some discussion about whether we might seek, get some benefit by joining a consortium, either the county or. Uh the one up in Morris, uh I know the mayor's reached out to the county and I guess you've asked for some, a spreadsheet, but we're waiting to reply.
Um, sorry Jeff, I have a question about the library, the roof, if it, we're celebrating twenty years in the library. The roof usually has to be replaced around twenty-five years typically, is that, is that coming up soon or?
Yeah, that's actually.
I mean, I know that there's repairs and stuff that are being made, but we're not replacing, we're replacing the whole roof?
Yeah.
And can we look into replacing it with solar, like not solar panels, but the solar actual like tiles?
Without if it's not the right.
It's the wrong, it's the wrong orientation, the, the benefit from solar, that's what we're told.
Yeah, but they now have like roofs that are fully made of, so.
Right, but you'd have to, you have to be painted pointed in the right direction. So we'd actually have, it was as, it was explained to me, we'd actually have to build a, some sort of gantry on the roof so that that part would be cantilevered in the right direction.
And plus we've already awarded the contract.
Oh, I thought that might have been only for the, for like the, the bolt-ons, you know, there's like the bolt-on like rectangle that you can put on? But I thought if you had the actual, the whole roof was made of.
Not if it's pointed in the right way, though.
But we've already awarded the contract or something, it's kinda.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's starting.
Yeah.
I, I think that, I think that solar's a good idea, that we got an answer five.
So Tesla has the.
Yes, I don't think they're, they may not be cost, they may not be cost competitive right now, but um. The, what I, what I would say is, you know, we got information about solar five years ago, that's great, and I think that may have been a valid evaluation at the time. But it might be worth us just looking at solar and is there an application in the borough somewhere? You know, not restricted to just the library, but somewhere, and you know, five years, a lot has changed in the technology, there's, you know, new, there's new things available. I think it's worth taking a look at and, you know, beyond just the library, so, so maybe in parallel with whatever else is going on, is there something that's cost beneficial to us?
Yeah, there's lots of glances.
No doubt, we ought to, no doubt, we ought to be exploring that in some places.
Yeah, how, how do we go about doing that?
Well, I think the first point of reference is to find out what Basking Ridge's experience is.
Yeah.
Uh because they have a large installation that's up near their recycling uh place off Hill.
Would be a good place for us to do it.
Yeah, it's a good, so it's a good point of reference, maybe start with that and go from there, we get a little bit of information.
Yeah.
And the terms of the green team, green team, uh.
And the terms of the green team, green team um actually doesn't meet until next week on the thirtieth, but uh just as a report, the. We did submit uh last month, the Ride Wise Grant about bike corridors. We're supposed to hear, I think it's January thirty-first, whether we get that grant or not.
And what does that mean, Jeff? What is what is that for?
So that's uh similar to what was done with the the walkability study, that they don't give us money, but they give us experts who come in and then.
So they're not building past or it's just.
No, they're not feeling, they're just saying, here's what could be done. You can choose, then you can choose whether you want to do it and whether you can afford to do it. The um but at least it's a plan and you what you're getting is free consult consultation, I should say. Um and then uh we're actually trying to put together a plastic bag exchange, which would be held on the same day as the Electronic Waste Day on April twenty-fifth. That'll be a topic uh on the thirtieth, on how we might be able to do that, but in the meantime, I'm working with that English on uh another grant that would that might pay for the. For the reusable bags.
Okay.
So I've already talked about personnel, um the first housing meeting is on the thirteenth. Last Thursday, the planning board meeting was canceled and the meeting on the sixth was before I had my schedule together and I was in California.
Okay.
We'll full report the next the next meeting.
Uh moving on to items of business, we have um allocation for funds for the next phase for topology. This is actually because if you recall, we have now designated Quimby Lane as an area in need of redevelopment. The next step is to do the plan. So that's what this um next piece is for, is to actually write the plan of what that's envisioned and what you can and can't do and. And I don't know if you remember, we had that the stages, this is, we did one A, now we're up to two in their original proposal, so.
And there's a third and fourth phase.
Yeah, and I don't know if we're gonna do those or not.
So we're talking about phase two, aren't we?
Only phase two, yeah. We're kind of breaking them out, looking at each one individually and whether we need to do it or not.
Are the phases online?
Um I don't know if the whole contract, I thought the whole contract was in the agenda, yeah, the whole their whole proposal with the. Because they gave us a proposal with each stage, and so we've been doing them one at a time as we feel it's time and we need to do it. It should be, yeah, it was attached, I know, I saw it.
Now, was this a drawdown of nineteen funds that were allocated or twenty?
No, this is gonna be twenty twenty budget.
Yeah. Um do we need a resolution for this?
Wait, you already did it, for for phase two, it was in the agenda.
Oh, so why is it on for?
Not sure.
Oh, I thought we already did that, oh, yeah, you're right, we did do it, too late. I don't know why.
I thought you were gonna talk about three and four, I still remember we were gonna proceed with that.
Yeah, I think we're gonna wait, well, I think three was to um. Reissue the the RFPs, which we may not need to do.
Right.
Um and I forget what four was, do you remember what four was?
I don't remember, but the the mayor and I spoke earlier today, and she has spoken to Joe DiMarco, who said we didn't really need everything they proposed in phases three and four. And the mayor wanted to know, can we renegotiate those phases? Absolutely we can. And we can make it an hourly rate with the cap as opposed to a lump sum for all the things they proposed, so that that will become a factor, I'm sure.
Okay.
Yeah, so right now, all we're looking to do is is two, which is to get the plan done. Actually, I think I I had the co- a copy of the contract here, let me just see what the.
Phase two and three.
Two was the redevelopment plan.
Right.
Yeah, three was modifying and issuing an updated RFP. Um and four was assisting us in negotiating a redevelopment agreement, which again, I think, you know, we may need them to consult on that. But really, that would be the role of the attorney, so I don't think we need to give them, you know, the whole piece on that. So we'll do those one at a time and look at them. Um the appointment of Jeff Ruse to the Cultural Arts Committee. Uh he actually called, he saw the video for the winter farmer's market that Ed did. And he called me and said he now works for, he he's a videographer. And would love to help us do any other, if we want to do a a video for the borough or anything like that. So I thought with the cultural arts, he can help us with documenting the whole mural project and so he was very excited to serve on it.
I think the high schoolers were gonna do that too.
Yeah, but I thought he could help them, because he's a professional, so I thought that would be good. And he was very excited to uh to join. Um and then we had the two people for um the Board of Health, who both have medical kind of backgrounds. I spoke to both of them, had never met them, I mean, I haven't met them, but they sent in Skill Banks. Forms just I think unsolicited and both requested Board of Health and both have um, you know, good medical type backgrounds. So and I they both were excited to be on Board of Health. You know, they were both, you know, putting their toes in the water to volunteer, and I said, this is an an easy lift. Good place to start, so. Well, they only they meet, what, every other month?
Every other month.
Yeah, so they were excited.
And they really need the support.
Yeah.
There's two of them.
So do we need a a resolution for these appointments?
Motion confirming the mayor's two or three.
Oh, okay, can I have a motion to confirm these appointments?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, great. Um who wants to explain this? Does this really like? You wanna take this?
I I pass this on, I think, Rob, did I talk to you about this? I think we we said we wanted to get some background about what has been our pa- past experience, what's the actual percentage increase?
I believe uh got some information for us, right?
Yes. Yeah, at at the last meeting, we uh uh we referred it to the Finance Committee, so um it I mean, if if the additional time, we can table this to the.
Oh, yeah, because we haven't been, I think, since.
We haven't discussed this.
Right, so we can just table this to another.
Let's table it, I I think, for now, I think we need to get a little more detail. You know, I don't, the email that proposed this didn't indicate, it indicated the dollar increase without saying what the percentage increase was. It talked about, you know, what it would cover, but I don't know that our historical experience has been that this liability is that highly probable. So that's what I was trying to get at with the question, you know, is it worth paying the extra for the extra coverage? All right, so Finance Committee will take this up.
Okay, because we're hopefully meeting in the next week, maybe. Um next is, oh, mayor's update. Um on January fourteenth, Shura Arnold, um who is the library director, and I attended a census training workshop at Bridgewater Library. To talk about uh local level recruiting. Um January fifteenth, I went to the chamber breakfast at the Old Mill Inn. Mike Kerwin of the Somerset County Business Partnership was the speaker. He is actually retiring as the uh executive director of that, I think. In June or September, so we will be, he said they have some people they're interviewing, but um. The partnership really does amazing work in the county. Uh January eighteenth, I attended a mayor's breakfast that Congressman Malinowski had at the Bridgewater Library. Um which was uh educational as well as um I the other mayors from the surrounding towns were there. And we started to talk about shared services, which I think was really positive, so we're gonna try and set up a meeting and start exploring those. January twenty-third and twenty-fourth, I attended a planning conference in New Brunswick, which is sponsored by the American Planning Association. The New Jersey chapter and the um, I never know how to say this right, the Edward Blaustein?
That's right.
School of Planning and Public Policy was a great um conference. I got a lot of information about pilot programs and redevelopment and all the things that we're gonna be doing in other towns. Uh they had a mayor's panel from four other towns who have gone through this process, sharing their experiences. So I think it'll be really helpful as we move forward with this, so that was really a a good experience. Um the other thing, we got this picture. That Joe Laspada dropped off, which I saw like a flag. Of the soccer team, isn't that great? Those are all the soccer players and the coach.
The state champions, right?
Yeah, yeah, so we can get this hung up in Borough Hall, isn't that great?
Yeah.
So that was really nice to send a thank you note for that. Oh, yeah, here, pass it over. Um and you already heard about the winter wellness crawl, so we're, I'm good, that was my report. Um correspondence, I did have a letter from Rare and Headwaters. Who always does, we do our clean communities and the stream cleanup, which is coming up in April. Um we do give them a contribution, not a contribution, it's a participation fee, actually. So that we can participate in this as well as get the T-shirts and all the the things they give us, the the bags and. Uh the help and assistance. So uh we had been giving them, I think it was three hundred dollars, and they're asking now for a thousand dollars. I asked Ralph today, and we do have clean communities grants that we get, in which so we can do the thousand dollars if the council is good with that. Um it's April eighteenth is the stream cleanup. They got over sixteen tons of trash out of the uh streams and rivers. Nine thousand plastic bottles, three thousand plastic bags, fifty-three tires from seventy-nine miles of streams. And we had, they were had over five thousand volunteers uh last year, and I mean, we had quite a few here.
Yep.
Doing the pond and stream and um just about everywhere. So if you're good with that, uh with increasing it and it's coming out of our grant money, be good?
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Excellent. Um do we have any other correspondence?
There's a.
Library.
Oh, the the mini golf wants to have.
The ABC license.
Yeah, anything we need to do on that?
Just really, just the motion.
I don't, it's your building. I I I I'm I'm a little mixed on this, because, you know, I I came in and talked to you about this last of all, about these. About our two support groups wanting to do their fundraisers at the library. They they do each, serve liquor, they get permits. Uh and we had a problem with the uh uh which you solved with the foundation, which was not at the library last year. Um but uh but the friends, which are doing the min- the mini golf, are serving very limited amounts of liquor. They they, you know, like to adults only, they have two tickets, which means either two glasses of wine or two beers. And they're serving them themselves, and they are covered uh un- under the library's policy, which is under your GIP policy, you know. Um and and the fund, and they pay for their own share, but but they're under the general policy. They're they're doing this event as if it were the library, so I don't, I mean, but it's still your building, I mean, I think you have to. And and I I don't think we focused on this very carefully. I don't know, a resolution, a motion to approve the the use of the library building for a library fundraiser, is that, would that be right, Jeff?
Well, I I have no objection to that, but I think this is for a library purpose, probably.
It's okay?
Approval's not required.
Okay, if if council approval's not required, um I said, I just want to say that I've already talked to the foundation seriously. About not leaving the amount of amount of liquor and insurance. Issues to the very end of the process, and they have, and and I will make sure that those are solved well before they ho- hold their event. The first weekend in October.
But they'll get their own insurance, or they're covered on their other.
No, 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 but. They they need to deal with how they're serving, whether they themselves are serving. The donated liquor, or whether they are out. But they did a wine tasting, which they did at the USET as their last fundraiser. The wineries provided people who would pour the wine for tasting, which is pretty standard. Nobody focused early enough on whether the wineries would give. The foundation and therefore the library hold harmless agreements. And so they they didn't do it, and you, the council, agreed that it would be okay to um to let this happen. Because it's like a week.
Yeah, it was like, dude.
Yeah. What I'm trying to say is, I think they'll probably serve the wine for the wine tasting they want to do in October themselves. Which means that that issue of needing to get hold harmless agreements goes away. But once again, um if 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 Jack thinks that the library board has the authority to 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 approve this use. I just want to make sure you guys know about it and are not unhappy.
I think that's a good idea, to keep the council.
Yeah, well, I mean, I've I've always come in and said, look, we're we're having a an event in which we're serving wine and. We we've had the we've had the statute, the rights under an ordinance to do that for many, many years.
Yes.
Yeah, but that's.
As long as the GIFs have the.
Yeah, that that's the main thing.
Yes.
The GIFs. Anthony and I, Anthony and I want to make sure that we keep GIF happy. Okay, thank you, Terry. Um I did, we did get another thing from the water company, the last minute.
I got it today in the mail, it was about a public hearings on that uh increase of rates for at some point in February.
This is, yeah, because of American Water, it was um. The dates for the public hearings, and I don't think anybody made the meeting with Bedminster. I don't think any that any of us could attend, so I don't know what happened there, did you hear, you didn't hear back from the clerk, so, okay. Do we have any unfinished business?
I want to raise, actually, we talked about this back in December. I'd raised the issue about, uh we had the. Talked about the use of two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen recreational funds, the twenty percent. We had that list, I think of seven items, then we had agreed to split off some of those items. Keep a small group and devote the remainder to the um to the consultant. And I brought up the issue about, uh do we have a plan for walk uh wheelchair access to the polo grounds and to the paths that we have? And I think Doug or John are gonna look into that and get back to us about what the costs were gonna be and the feasibility, et cetera, et cetera. Where do we leave that? Is that just hanging?
Were you here?
When?
He might, yeah, he might have, he might have, he might have been.
Maybe that's when I went to the restroom or something, I don't know.
Oh, I didn't, I'm saying, like, I thought.
I don't remember, we talked about the path, we didn't talk about wheelchair access.
No, it's on the list.
It's one of the items.
It's handicap access to field.
So.
We were talking about, oh, you're right, you weren't there, because I looked over here and the chair was in.
Yes, he was in the bathroom.
Okay, I'm like, oh, I was just.
I usually, I usually take notes and pay attention, okay, yeah, so, okay, well, I'm sorry, then I I beg you go over it again, but where where are we at? Where do we stand with wheelchair access?
On the eighteenth, we're gonna talk about.
Yes, we had asked.
Put it back to the Public Works Committee.
Doug about where we stood on these projects, and it was his understanding, because we didn't give him clear direction. He thought we were holding off on these until we did the plan. So I asked the council, we said, no, we want to move forward with them, so I gave it to Christine for um the next.
We have actually had the same question back in December, we said.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So with those expenditures, have you spent down the previous twenty percent allocations from previous years? I don't think so.
There's a little, there's a little bit left, I think, there's still a little bit left.
This is two years. Yeah.
From prior years, and so there's an accumulated balance, a small number, less than a hundred thousand, that's in the um development side. Already, and then there's the anticipated funds from this year coming in, which are all flagged as a hundred percent flexible.
Well, well, that was one forty-six, that was two years' work, right?
What I'm saying, I figure it was like two hundred thousand or something in the account, so we 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 have an ordinance for one forty-six, there's the remaining amount, the difference between that and whatever the total balance was. So there's a small existing balance there from, it might be from two thousand eighteen money, for example, you know?
Um how about the master rec plan? What are what are our next steps there?
We're gonna, can we discuss that in in executive, about a contract or?
It's contract negotiations, yes.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be discussing that in executive, okay. Um any new business?
I'm still working, it's I guess it's old business, the mobile DMV.
Yeah.
It's um, we're exploring the option of having it be at the library event. We don't know which event, but the library would really like to host it. At the library during one of their events, because it will bring people to the library. So that's where we're at.
So either the whole lot of fun event or the October event?
Definitely not whole lot of fun.
Okay, so which other events?
But maybe March, they have tons of events.
Okay, some event.
Yeah.
It depends on the work on the roof and the stuff like that.
Right.
And what event is this?
The mobile DMV.
So they'll come here and do your registrations and licenses, I guess, so, yeah. As long as you have your eight forms of, whatever they are, IDs, eight forms of ID. Um, okay, last open session, last chance for the public to be heard.
Two minutes?
Yes, now you get three.
Okay, um I'd like to talk about the census.
Yes.
Um I spent last Saturday at a state training session, I'm I'm on the county, the Lee County Committee. I spent last Saturday at a state training session, I'm on the county, Complete Count Committee. And I spent last Saturday at a state training session for organizing local complete count committees. I think, as most of you know, parts of Burnsville are considered, are going to, are considered hard to count. I have a tentative plan for reaching out to the Latino community. I'd like to tell you, first, putting up posters in Spanish at Latino community meeting places. And I have a list of possibilities, Mary Jane and I have talked about these, and I got some more ideas from Theo Malgrom. Theo Malgrom used to be a high school Spanish teacher. She's an interpreter for the school board still, and she's worked in the ESL. She and her husband have both worked in the ESL program at the library. And she's very fluent in Spanish, much more than I am. And so she's offered to help me get, you know, explain to people why we want to put these posters up in Spanish. And then the next step is to try to find trusted members of Latino community who are willing to talk to other members of the Latino community and try to convince them that filling out a census form will not mean that their names and addresses are reported to ICP, which of course is what their fear is. And we have some ideas about how to do that also. And Mary Jane, who's also on the county committee, has given me some names. There are, I think, three that I know of so far, faith-based contacts I would want to make. There are, and I would like to put these posters in Spanish and a supply of them also down at the day labor hiring, day labor hiring site at the railroad station and have them up and have available copies, you know, that people can pick up and take home and read in Spanish. From the borough, all I would like at this point is the ability to get some copies made of these, these three US Census posters in Spanish. And then in, you know, the first mailing is going out to everybody on, I think it's March twelfth. With, with the library's handheld computers, I'd like to try, I know we're planning to set up a census kiosk in the library where, and we have people who have been trained already in assisting to fill out the forms. I'm hoping that I will be able to get library staff to do some early morning and late, late evening volunteering with the same handheld computers at the labor, day labor hiring site. And I've got a meeting with the superintendent of schools and her ESL facilitators and the ESL, the outreach parents who work with the various PTAs to make sure that Latino parents are informed. And they, we will all be working together to do this, but I think I need your blessing.
I also bless our gratitude.
And I think I'd also, I'd also like to be able to, you know, run a hundred copies to start with at some point here in Borough Hall.
Can we use the facilities here?
Can we?
Yeah, it's for a public purpose and it benefits the borough to have a full council.
Oh, yeah, it certainly benefits the borough and Rhodes, Rhodes Schools, right there.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate your work on this and taking on this task. Thank you so much. Well, see, I'm no longer pressed for the library. Yeah, you gotta fill up those hours. I've got all this free time. Yeah, see that? Okay, anybody else from the public wish to be heard? All right, I will close the public session. We need a motion to go into closed session.
Moving on to closed session.
Second.
Holders in favor?
Aye.
I propose? Okay.